Today is Tuesday, April the 4th, 2023. It is now 6:00 PM and we are in the community wing of City Hall. I would ask you all to please stand and join me for our Pledge of Allegiance. Following the pledge, you are welcome to remain standing for a moment of silence, to reflect, meditate, pray, or pause for a moment.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please take your seats. Our moment of silence has concluded. I'm going to ask City Council, we have a large number of proclamations this evening, so I'm going to ask for your consent if we could move the proclamations in advance of the public comment because we have children involved, if that's okay with everyone.
Mayor, can we do roll call?
And then we'll do roll call.
Mayor Alvin?
Present.
Vice Mayor Danko?
Here.
Councilmember Hyder? Councilmember Clufus?
Present.
Councilmember Pontieri?
Present.
Mayor, all members are present.
Our first proclamation this evening is regarding Autism Acceptance Month. So if you'd all please come up and gather with me. Whereas autism affects an estimated one in 44 children and one in 45 adults, and is a complex disorder that affects each person differently, resulting in unique strengths and challenges. And whereas autism can cause challenges with verbal and nonverbal communication, social interaction, and repetitive behaviors, and can affect anyone regardless of age, race, ethnicity, gender, or socio-economic background. And whereas a comprehensive collaborative approach will help to advance research, providing a better understanding of the many forms of autism while strengthening advocacy efforts and ensuring access to services and resources throughout their life. And whereas early diagnosis and intervention tailored to individual needs can have lifelong benefits, easing the transition to adulthood and fostering greater independence. And whereas each person and family impacted by autism should have access to reliable information, support, and opportunities to live up to their greatest potential. And whereas the city of Palm Coast is honored to partner alongside Vincent's Clubhouse and the Autism Spectrum Disorder Social Group to observe Autism Acceptance Month in the hope that it will lead to further research and a better understanding of the disorder. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, that the month of April 2023 be officially designated as Autism Acceptance Month.
Thank you all for coming tonight and thank you for your support of Vincent's Clubhouse and the Autism Acceptance Month here in Palm Coast. Vincent's Clubhouse, we're a 501(c)(3) local here in Palm Coast that is dedicated to serving children and young adults with autism and special needs and their families. We have a summer camp, the only summer camp in Flagler County, for children with special needs, support groups, social events, advocacy programs, and many more. And we're not-for-profit. Without all of the help and support, we would not be here. So thank you for coming and thank you, Mayor Alvin, for taking the time to acknowledge this tonight. It means more to the special needs and the autism community than anyone could possibly know. So thank you for your support.
And let me just say that all of City Council supports this proclamation and we hope to see you all back here again next year as well.
My name is Jenna Goldberg. I was diagnosed with autism at age four. Growing up, it's been difficult for me. I had some trouble fitting in at my schools. And even when I was able to move on to the mainstream class during my high school years, it was still a little difficult. But however, as I transitioned into adulthood and moved here from New York, I began to realize my true potentials. Now for starters, I have many goals in mind, a lot of which is ultimately owning my own business. Now, don't get me wrong, with all due respect, just because I have autism does not mean I'm not capable of owning and running a business. In fact, I feel like I can do it. If, I wouldn't do it if it were not for the help of my family here. Just because, with all due respect again, labels are still labeled regardless how much you want to try and sugarcoat them. I want to be known for my accomplishments first, first and foremost, and my disability last. And even then, I still feel like it's going to take some time before I ultimately reach my goal. Patience is ultimately a good, a sound strategy. Thank you.
You better watch out for that guy. He's going to be mayor one day. Our next proclamation this evening is Water Conservation Month. Obviously, integrally important to both our past, present, and future for the state of Florida and the city of Palm Coast. Whereas water is a basic and essential need for every living creature. And whereas the state of Florida, the St. John's River Water Management District and other water management districts and the city of Palm Coast are working together to increase awareness about the importance of water conservation. And whereas the city of Palm Coast and the state of Florida have designated April typically a dry month when water demands are most acute, Florida's Water Conservation Month to educate citizens about how they can help save Florida's precious water resources. And whereas the city of Palm Coast has always encouraged and supported water conservation through various educational programs and special events. And whereas every business industry, school, and citizen can make a difference when it comes to conserving water. And whereas every business industry, school, and citizen can help by saving water and thus promote a healthy economy and community. And whereas the city of Palm Coast is participating in the annual National Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation and encourages all residents to take the pledge online at www.mywaterpledge.com during the month of April. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and city council of the city of Palm Coast that the month of April 2023 be officially designated as Water Conservation Month. And I have taken the pledge, so please try to outdo me in how much water you can save.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Gretchen Smith and I'm Water Conservation Coordinator for St. John's River Water Management District. We have a great partner here in the city of Palm Coast. I get to work with a fantastic colleague, Garen. And also, you know, we know that the city manager, given her background, there's definitely a vested interest in Palm Coast in making sure that we're using water efficiently. But let me tell you, everyone in this room can do something to help future generations of Floridians and help make sure that there's water coming in for them. What is the statistic now? There's a thousand new people every day coming to Florida. And we're going to have to get creative when it comes to figuring out, you know, how we're going to, you know, water our lawns, how we're going to drink water, how we're going to shower. And everyone in this room can do something about it. I love the pledge. I think that's great. But just little things you can think about. Turning off the water when you're brushing your teeth, making sure that your irrigation is only running two days a week, if it even needs running at all. Because if you get an inch of rain, you don't need to be running your sprinkler that week. So there's a lot of things we can do collectively to make sure that, you know, that we've got the water we need to accommodate all the growth that's coming to our state. So again, thank you and conserve water.
All right, I have a third and then there will just be two more proclamations. But these are really important. I don't even know where to begin on this one. So this is a proclamation, I believe it's our first time, with Distracted Driving Awareness Month. Whereas distracted driving is an epidemic on our roadways, claiming thousands of lives and injuring hundreds of thousands each year in the United States. And whereas informing drivers of the dangers of using handheld communication devices while operating a motor vehicle is essential to reducing distraction-related fatalities and injuries. Whereas distracted driving occurs when drivers engage in activities that divert their attention from the road, such as texting, talking on a cell phone, adjusting the radio, or interacting with passengers. And whereas the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration states that each day in the United States approximately nine people are killed and more than a thousand are injured in crashes that reportedly involve a distracted driver. And whereas increased awareness about the dangers of distracted driving may reduce traffic fatalities and injuries in Palm Coast and throughout the country. And whereas the city of Palm Coast believes a month dedicated to programs and activities focused on reducing distracted driving will significantly raise awareness. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor of the city of Palm Coast and the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, that the month of April 2023 will be officially designated as Distracted Driving Awareness Month.
Thank you. My name is Colleen Nicklin and I'm the Executive Director of the River to Sea TPO. And we work every day with the city of Palm Coast on important initiatives. And we're very honored to partner with them on Distracted Driving Awareness Month along with the Florida Department of Transportation to bring awareness to distracted driving and the devastating effects that it can have on our community. We all have the right to go home at the end of the day to see our families. And just like with water conservation, every single one of you in this room plays a role in eliminating distracted driving on our roadways. Thank you.
Councilperson Pontieri will...
Whereas Florida's bright future depends on the healthy development of its children. And whereas adverse childhood experiences, including the abuse and neglect of children, can cause severe and costly consequences for children, families, and society as a whole. And whereas every child has a right to a safe, healthy, and happy childhood where they are educationally and developmentally on track. And whereas research shows that parents and caregivers who have support systems and know how to seek help in times of trouble are more resilient and better able to provide safe environments and nurturing experiences for their children. And whereas it is vital that individuals, businesses, schools, and community organizations make children a top priority and take action to support the physical, social, emotional, and educational development and competency of all children. And whereas during Prevent Child Abuse Florida in collaboration with the Governor's Office of Adoption and Child Protection, the Florida Department of Children and Families, and the ounce of prevention fund of Florida implement Pin Wheels of Prevention. And whereas Pin Wheels for Prevention is a statewide coordinated campaign aimed to increase awareness of child abuse prevention efforts by encouraging healthy child development, positive parenting practices, and community support. And whereas the blue and silver pinwheel displays in this campaign are used to symbolize the health and happiness all children deserve. And whereas Child Abuse Prevention Month is an important opportunity to urge all Floridians to engage in activities that strengthen families and communities and that provide the optimal environment for healthy child development. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, that the month of April 2023 be officially designated as Child Abuse Prevention Month.
Good evening. My name is Kristy Gillis. I'm the Community Development Administrator for the Department of Children and Families. Again, April is Child Abuse Prevention Month and I want to thank the city. If you notice around the city, all the Boys and Girls Clubs in Flagler County will have pinwheels. Thank you to Advent Health. In Circuit 7, we will all be wearing blue this week, as will all the youth in Flagler County schools. It's Wear Blue Week as well. Flagler Oars will be holding a Lunch and Learn on April 13th about child abuse prevention, and that is online. I just want to again thank all of you. Anyone can plant a pinwheel or a pinwheel garden, a virtual garden. You can do activities with your children, grandchildren, to promote healthy families. I want to thank our partners, Stuart Marchman. We have the Child Protection Team, Epic Behavioral Healthcare, Flagler County Schools, Flagler County Sheriff's Department, and all of our supports. Thank you very much.
Councilperson Hyder will now give a proclamation on Volunteer Month.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am truly honored to be able to present this proclamation to these wonderful ladies here. I have to say that I was a late bloomer and I ended up going back to school and completing my bachelor's degree in 2013. And when I completed my degree, I couldn't figure out what I was going to do with the rest of my life. So I decided to go and volunteer. I volunteered in so many places in this community and it was one of the most rewarding things that I have ever done in my life. So I want to just say to these ladies, whereas April is Florida Volunteer Month. This month was established as the official time to recognize and celebrate the efforts of volunteers and the local, state, and on national levels. And whereas volunteers can connect with local community service experiences through hundreds of community service organizations, including Flagler Volunteer Services. Whereas volunteers address the most pressing challenges facing our cities, counties, and our nation. From educating students for the jobs of the 21st century and supporting veterans and military families to preserving the environment and helping communities recover from national disasters. And whereas volunteering enhances the lives of volunteers, increases self-esteem and physical well-being, provides opportunities to learn new skills and abilities, and offers the chance to meet new friends and associates. And whereas nonprofits, charities, community, and faith-based groups, schools, national service programs, and volunteer centers such as Flagler Volunteer Services have joined with the state and local governments to celebrate and praise volunteers who have given tirelessly, selflessly to the service of others. And whereas volunteers are vital to our future as a caring and productive nation. Now therefore it be proclaimed by the mayor and the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, that the month of April 2023 be officially designated as Community Volunteer Month and encourage residents to acknowledge the positive impact volunteers achieve in their community as they dedicate themselves tirelessly and selflessly to make Palm Coast a loving place in which to live, work, and play. Signed this day, April 4th, 2023. Thank you so much, ladies.
Yeah, I just wanted to share some information. My name is Suzie Gamblane and I'm the Executive Director of Flagler Volunteer Services. And we provide volunteer support to all the local nonprofits and government agencies. We've, we were definitely hard hit by COVID with a lot less volunteers for the last few years. But what we're seeing now is a steady, steady growth in numbers of volunteers that are active and numbers of locations that are utilizing our volunteers. So I just wanted to share a little bit of information about the statistics for 2022. In 2022, we had 1,548 volunteers that were active and reported serving over 67,000 hours. Based on the independent sector's value of a volunteer hour, that is over $2 million in value to the county. The value, just based on minimum wage, is still $750,000. So that's a tremendous value for our community, the work that volunteers do. This is only about a half of what we were before COVID, but as I mentioned, our numbers are steadily increasing. We're seeing 2023 as like the comeback year. We have seen tremendous amount of volunteer activity so far in the last three months of 2023. It's been really amazing. Some of the notable locations in the city of Palm Coast, there were 301 volunteers at Flagler Humane Society alone. So they are very active there. Rimfire Elementary had over 185. The COP program has had 65 that reported hours to our agency for serving the community. So those are just some of the numbers from some of the local places. I also wanted to mention a few of the programs that we do because in addition to providing support to other organizations, we have programs that fill gaps in the community. Our Reading Pal program, which serves kids in VPK through 3rd grade and helps with their literacy skills. We had 52 volunteers serving over 100 students. Our Blanketiers program, we have 37 volunteers who handmade 335 items that went out to people that were facing crisis. Our Giving Store program had 95 volunteers who served over 320 children, providing them with 1,700 gifts that they were able to give to their family members. A little different than other Christmas programs in our community. It's all about, for us, it's all about giving, whether it's volunteering or teaching as a child the joy of giving. And then our Emergency Support Services, which had 88 volunteers who helped at the local shelters, with the county's call center, with sandbag distribution, traffic control, and with cleanup efforts for Hurricane Ian and Nicole. So we're very active in the community, getting more and more active each day. And I'm very happy to be here tonight and appreciate the support from the city of Palm Coast.
And I can proudly say that I too was a part of Flagler Volunteer Services.
And our final proclamation this evening, Councilman Clufus will proclaim National Public Safety Telecommunications Day. So Councilman Clufus, take it away.
Good evening. This one is pretty important because everyone in Palm Coast, and I wish that you'd never have to use our emergency services. When you pick up that telephone and you need help, the voice on the other end of that line is very important. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. Whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Flagler County Emergency Communication Center. And whereas public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. Whereas public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas public safety telecommunications for Flagler County have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas each dis- And whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in this past year. Now therefore be proclaimed by the mayor and city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, that the week of April 9th, 2023 be officially designated as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe. Signed this fourth day of April 2023, City of Palm Coast Mayor David Alphen.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Kristina Mortimer. I am the Director of Communications for the Flagler County Sheriff's Office. For those of you that don't know, our dispatch center is consolidated, so that means that we are responsible to answer all police, fire, and medical calls. We have 19 very highly qualified, trained dispatchers in our dispatch center, and they do a phenomenal job every day that they come on. They have to go through a very extensive training. It's about a year for dispatchers to get fully trained. They are trained in pre-arrival EMD, which is Emergency Medical Dispatch Instructions. And just to give you an idea of what that is, is about two weeks ago, we had a citizen call in, her infant was not breathing. And as you can imagine, the mother was pretty distraught. The dispatcher used her EMD, was able to calm the mother down, immediately went into CPR instructions, and before the phone was disconnected, the baby was breathing. So. They save lives quite often. There are, it's not always successful stories. We've had a dispatcher that was on the line while a citizen called in. He was pretty adamant, he wanted to end his life. He did it with her on the phone. So these are things that dispatchers are hearing. We are not classified as first responders at the, right now, at this moment. We are currently fighting to get that recognition so they can get the high-risk retirement and the medical health assistance that is necessary to get through this job. So on behalf of everybody in the dispatch center, I was hoping to bring more with me, but we are very busy, so they are busy answering the calls. But thank you very much for this proclamation. It means a lot.
We will now move forward with the agenda to item D, which is public participation. In order for city staff to be able to respond to your questions or concerns, please fill out a comment card with your contact information. The comment cards can be found on the table near the agendas or available from the communications director, who has her hand up in the back of the room. Anyone wishing to speak may approach the podium, provide their name, and may speak for up to three minutes. This portion of public comment should focus on matters not on the agenda. Please direct all comments to the mayor, be concise and to the point, avoid delaying or interrupting the proceedings, and do not make irrelevant, impertinent, or slanderous comments. Any person who becomes disorderly may be barred from making any additional comments and may be removed. Again, those that have public comment regarding a specific agenda item, just hold until we get to that agenda item. You will have your three minutes during that agenda item. So for items that are not on this evening's agenda, are there members of the public that would like to come forward and address city council at this time? Yes, ma'am? Right, right to the podium if you can. And you can just turn that microphone.
Turn it around. My name is Joanne Gracie Campos, and I've been in Florida since 2004. Unfortunately, my husband passed away in 2010, and I was very lonely, didn't know what to do. And a friend of mine said to join this, this social group that I had gone into. Couple of years later, I went into, I had gone into the social group, and then I decided to do my own social group. Right now, I have 75 members. My job is to find things to do with this club, to, think, we go to theaters, we go to movies, we go to boat trips and stuff. I called the Flagler Historical Society last week to find out when they were going to do their buses, the bus tours. And she said, she said, "We are unable to do them because we cannot get a bus." They used to get a bus from the Transportation Department in Flagler County, and they, she said that this year that they were not providing a bus. So I'd like to find out why. This is very important because this is a really fun trip, and you could learn a lot about Flagler County. We did it every year. Can't do it this year. And my club wants to know why.
Very good. Thank you for your comment, and we'll, we'll follow up with you.
Okay, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Next speaker, please. Yes, sir.
Andrew Palm Coast. Greetings. So last month, a small group of citizens, heroes, appealed to the city council to reconsider the rules about backyard chickens. The mayor at that time suggested that we check out the agricultural center, and then we received an email stating that having chickens within Palm Coast city limits was against the rules because chickens are considered farm animals. So let me make my request a little bit more clear. We want chickens to be reclassified as domestic fowl and have the opportunity for yards, of course, within respectful limits, in which we are glad to, you know, work within the city to determine what those limits are. Now, I understand that not all residents are in favor of this change, but let me give you some perspective. I live close to two homeowners who have pit bulls as pets. Not all pit bulls are aggressive, but they would have the capacity to maul me and my family while we pass by. I don't like the idea of that happening, but I support their right to keep the pets that they determine they want to keep. I do not ask the city to protect me from what might happen because protecting myself and my family is my responsibility. So I've been on a few homeowners association boards, and I, so I understand a little bit about how this works. Lot of times you go through those non-agenda items and you kind of, you know, you just pass on, on them until you can get to your agenda items. And, you know, those things, the things that you spend money on in your projects. That's just my experience. I'm not accusing you guys of that, but I, I also understand that, you know, it's just me, as long as it's just me, that the council can just pass me along after three minutes and go about their business. So I'm just asking what it will take for the board to consider these actions. What will it take to ruffle some feathers, in a sense, in this town? Is it, is it more people? Is it the amount of signatures or something else? So I'm here doing my due diligence as a citizen and appealing to the city council to see my request. I believe that this matter is a matter of preference over safety. So it's, if it's not a safety issue, then my request should at least be considered. If it's a matter of preference, then I'm here to respectfully ask to change your minds about this. I'm also testing our process here in this town, you know, the process that you all swore to uphold. I want to see if it still works. I would hope that we encourage our citizens to be active in their government and just not pass them along because it's not a major agenda item. Okay? So, yeah, again, like I left last time, I hope you all have a...
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Philip Lowe. You've all heard from me. I live at 29 Collingwood Lane in an ICF home. I built that home 23 years ago with the help of Don Lowe, the deceased Don Lowe. We wish to move to a less populated area and have a place to store our large personal items. With this in mind, we found a five-acre lot out on Old Kings North, Old Kings Road North. Before purchasing the lot, I made two trips to planning and zoning to find out the requirements and restrictions. I was told the following. The house had to have a double garage. I could build a large barn, but could not be taller than the house. The barn could not have roll-up doors because the salary department manager did not like them. I could build an unlimited amount of double garages, but they could not be attached to each other. After closing on the purchase of the lot, my wife and I went to City Hall to secure a clearing permit. We presented, we were presented a video on the sliding doors, and we again explained our desire to have the place to store our large personal items, and the barn would be ideal. We have explained this from the very start, that we wanted to build a barn for storage. After we arrived home, I received a call from a lady who I believe was the department assistant manager, telling me that I could not use the barn for storage. It had to be used for agriculture items. I have found out there is a barn several lots away from ours that has roll-up doors. I would appreciate any necessary changes to make it possible to store things in the barn. Who cares what's inside my barn?
I'm going to ask you, hold on a minute, to hold your applause with respect to the next speaker. They were quiet when you were speaking, or they will be quiet when you are speaking, so please, hold your applause. And city manager, you have a note on that?
I do, and I'm aware of Mr. Lowe's concern, and our staff is actually scheduling a meeting to address that.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Sky Warner. Today I would like to address the matter of chickens. Chickens are a very substantial animal. They lay eggs, which are very high in protein, and when the chickens have served their purpose, they can provide you with a hearty meal. Another reason why I think owning chickens is a good idea is because I believe it would do the youth of Palm Coast good. Us kids need responsibilities. What would be a better responsibility than feeding the chickens and collecting their eggs? I have noticed the price of eggs rise concerningly. An excellent solution to this problem would be to own a couple of chickens. I have an uncle in Missouri who owns chickens, and besides the fact that my cousins absolutely adore the chickens, he is provided with so many eggs that I'm sure he'll never have to buy them from a grocery store ever again. I personally love chickens. They are funny and excellent source of entertainment. On top of all other benefits, I know some have their doubts about chickens because they assume they're loud and obnoxious. But to all those people who think so, hens, the providers of eggs, don't make noise. The only thing you'll hear them say is a couple of soft clucks. Dogs are way louder than hens. If you wish to negotiate something about roosters, me and my party will be glad to strike a deal. Thank you so much for your time, and I can't wait to be here next month.
Thank you. Very nicely said. Next speaker, please.
Lieutenant Lengori, Palm Coast. I hate to retrograde, and to the young lady and to the others about chickens, I would mention this. That when we fought five years to become a city, we were unincorporated, and you could have cows, horses, and whatnot on your property. And the reason that the people voted to incorporate was to get rid of that. And I might ask the people with chickens, "I love pigs." All right, with that said, I'd like to back up a minute now. We Italians are stigmatized by a term which is called "make them an offer they can't refuse." And I'd like to do that. The city manager's been extremely helpful with this problem of wildfire mitigation. Let's end the nonsense about the verbiage. Why don't we just turn around and say, "You got bushes over three foot tall? You cut them." And that's the name of the game. Revisit the ordinance and change it. Why? Because people's houses will burn. They're up there six feet right now in some areas. It's not fair. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please. Yes, sir.
First, Stonestreet, Simont Drive. I was in court today for a good friend of mine who was run down on Flagler Avenue. She was a waitress at one of the bars, and she was not only run down once, but twice. And the judge, although defendant was not there, was a pre-tri, pre-trial, he says, "You will be going to jail for 14 years. And if you want to pursue this and go by jury, I'll make your prison time 30 years." We all know what happened on Flagler Avenue over the weekend. Thank God, the city council, no one was hurt. And we go back to Simont Drive. Five years fighting traffic. And the worst part? Your engineering department keeps on saying, "There's no records of speeding." When I was in court today, I went over to the record division, and they have my name for years. They were nice to bring up a printed report, but they couldn't print it out because their system is different now. He says, "I don't know why they're telling you there's no speeding. We're issuing tons of traffic tickets on Simont." And the people that say they don't want safety devices live on the side street. Every person on Simont Drive, except one woman, wants speed devices on the street. And there's people that are saying, "We're going to sue if someone gets hurt." So you guys are going to have a major, major problem. And I just want to remind you, Spectrum is airing Simont next week. It's going to be on national TV, as I mentioned to one of the council people here. It's not going to be good publications for, for Palm Coast. It's going to be embarrassing. Three hours in front of my house. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
My name is Loretta Suley. I live in Palm Coast for the last 15 years, and I'd like you to consider putting cameras back on the, on the lights, you know, the, the red lights and green lights. The traffic is so horrible now. When I stop at a red light and it turns green, I wait a few minutes because people go right through the lights. No one uses their directional signals anymore. They make a right, they make a left, they go from the left lane and make a right into the, go across the whole aisle. So I would like you to consider to please put the, the cameras back on the lights. It was, I felt much safer driving then. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker. Yes, sir.
Robert McDonald, Palm Coast. $100,000. Just remember that number because it's going to play into the picture in a few minutes. $100,000. I've been here eight years without putting them in order. The golf course. Holland Park. The new community center. The pickleball court. The city officials or council getting 151% raise. Now, this is where the $100,000 is coming. All of those projects, and there's probably more, have cost the taxpayers at least $100,000 or better. But yet, a month ago, I sat in that chair, my daughter sat next to me, and my grandson sat next to me. And all we asked was for the city to take some of that money, that they keep spending it, without, no matter what we say. They'll say, "Yep, yep, yep, okay." A month ago, I asked the city to reconsider or to consider putting in, oh, I know one, the sun shed in the park, in Ralph Carter Park. That was another thing. So we spent all this money, but yet Parks and Recreation, who control this, will not even entertain the thought of putting cameras in our parks to protect our children. And I said it two weeks ago, and I'm going to say it. I'm going to say it until you're sick and tired of me saying it. How much does a child's life cost? How much is it worth? It's got to be worth more than $100,000. It's got to be. But yet. Be politically correct, Robert. We have... But yet, be politically correct, Robert, we have people sitting in this room that are directors of the departments. People come up every week or every month, and they talk about the problems. It goes in one ear and right out the other. Please. They just had a mother and a little kid got killed last week down in South Florida. The mother was killed outside in her apartment. You know where they found the little two-year-old? In the mouth of an alligator. Again, how much money does it cost to put up a camera and to protect our children? That's all I'm trying to tell you now.
Thank you for your comment. Is there a next speaker that would like to, yes, sir.
Steve Carr, Palm Coast. I was, uh, visited by one of my service people around the neighborhood, and he says, "I will no longer service mowing the yards on Florida Park Drive that are on the east side of Florida Park Drive because the speeding is too dangerous for me to get my equipment across the street to mow your yard." Well, this is about the second or third time I've lost somebody because they're scared of the traffic that's on Florida Park Drive. It is very bad. It's, the speeding's just uncontrollable sometimes. I see people passing, and then other times people will try to pass, and the car that they're trying to pass speeds up, and they're dragging down the street. Not only that, is there's so much traffic. Approximately, from FDOT website, there's from anywhere from 83, sometimes up to 86,000 cars per day, approximately 9,000 cars a day, which would be 3 million cars a year, 60 feet from the bedrooms of children, 80 feet from children playing basketball on Palm Coast, uh, in Holland Park. And there's multiple health organizations and universities that, worldwide, that have done 30-year studies on the harm to people from close proximity to traffic to homes and prolonged exposure to traffic fumes, dust, and noise. And I've come up here, and I've talked about it many a times, but there has been nothing that I have seen that has been proposed to drastically reduce the amount of traffic on Florida Park Drive. Not only reduce the traffic because of the fumes, dust, and noise, but also to control the speeding that's constantly there. I've always asked, what is a child's health really worth? What is it worth to the city? What is a child's health worth? Is it worth looking at these scientific studies and determining whether or not there's any validity to them, or whether or not to do a health survey of parents to see, you know, if there's any harm happening to their children? Just what is a child's health worth? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Uh, the next speaker, please.
James. $85,000 for a feasibility and resiliency officer. I don't understand the justification for that, and whatever descriptive you have, I don't think we want to buy it or hear about it, but that's ridiculous. We need to spend this money. Here he goes again. I know you're saying that. The things we need: widening and repairing our deteriorating streets, improve turnoff lanes and widening them to accommodate additional traffic coming into the city. On the new housing you're bringing in, Old Kings Road still needs to be widened. Royal Palm from Belterra down to Sound Center is so patched up, it's ridiculous, looks almost like a war zone. White View, Rimfire, even Central Avenue coming here is all beat up. We need these streets repaired. And do you want to wait till the price doubles to do this? We need to get on this lake right away. Next issue. I'm coming down Pine Lakes Parkway at 45 miles an hour, and I come around a turn, and there's a kid on a two-wheel electric scooter doing 45 miles an hour pacing with me. We have e-bikes doing 25 miles an hour, and a guy in a little mobility scooter that looks like a car doing 25 miles an hour. The sign says "No Motor Vehicles." We take that originally to mean a gas vehicle, but I think we should look at this to say, should this include a powered vehicle, a recreational vehicle? So, the thing is, do we, do you want to put up a sign that says prohibited? Or do we want to waste the sheriff's time, or definitely say, enforce a speed limit? Because there are kids walking, kids walking, children with their kids, dogs, older people who can't hear sometimes. So I think we need to challenge you to look into this and see the safety of, of coming along Pine Lakes Parkway there. An island walk. I wish, like the city manager, the police contact someone because I can't. It's dangerous over there. They've got three-way intersections with no stop signs. It's a wonder there aren't more, more accidents there. Even over where Brass Tap is, you can't make that turn, a car coming out. They need to redesign this lot and fix it, and especially the shrubbery is in your way. So it's very, very ridiculous over there. So, um, I just wish you could, and our new council members, you promised you to back us up and be our, be our voice and stand behind us, so we challenge you to help maybe attack some of these issues and resolve some of these things for us.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, next speaker, please. Next two speakers.
Hello, I'm Josh Favien. I'm also here to talk about adding chickens to the backyards. I don't have a big, long speech, but there's avian flu killing, like, 50 million chickens, and I think that's as of January, so I'm sure that's increased. Supply chain issues, um, and lots of other potential issues that I think that if we don't address the situation now, people are just going to ignore the rules and start having chickens anyways, which I already know of that happening. I spoke to multiple families of people who have chickens in Palm Coast, and they did not want to come and out themselves as having chickens. But they have chickens in their backyard, and their neighbors don't care, and they're not hurting anyone. Um, and like what was shared previously, I don't care what other people do on their property, and I think that that is the rule that we should live by. Uh, and so if someone wants to have chickens in their yard and give their neighbors eggs, I don't know why that should be a problem for anyone. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Um, any additional speakers would like to address city council at this time?
Hello, Charlene Werner, Palm Coast. I'm also here to talk about chickens, but, um, in a little bit of a different way. Uh, never throughout history has there been a constitution like ours in America. The average constitution has lasted only 17 years. Ours has lasted well over 200 years, and we have experienced freedom and sex, uh, success like, as a nation like no other. Our founders created a constitution with one main goal in mind: to protect our inalienable rights. The purpose was not to take our rights away. They detested tyranny and created one of the most brilliant documents of all time that gave power to the people. Not to a king, not to elected officials, not to an exclusive wealthy elite, but to we the people, to the citizens. The word citizen means co-ruler. We the people are the co-rulers of this country. Many people are mistaken in thinking that America is a democracy. We are not. We are a constitutional republic. We are representative government, which means that we elect officials to represent us. We elect you to represent us. Unfortunately, this idea that our great nation was founded upon of representative government seems to have been thrown out the window, on the national level as well as on the local level. There seems to be a pattern of our elected officials going rogue. Rather than representing their constituents, they represent lobbyists, special interest groups, or their own personal agenda. Our great founders of this nation created a government with limited power, limited influence, and limited regulations on our lives. The abuse and overreach of our government is out of control and extremely far from what it was intended to be. I'm disappointed to find that this amazing patriotic town of Palm Coast is full of overreach and out-of-control regulations. In my opinion, there is no better place to live than Palm Coast. However, the amount of regulations is not in keeping with the Constitution or what the spirit of America is, the land of the free. This is about much more than chickens. This is a test to see if, if we have an elected body of representatives that are capable of functioning the way that they are meant to per the Constitution. I don't know when the original regulations concerning chickens or the multitude of other regulations were put into place in Palm Coast, but Palm Coast has been rapidly changing, and it seems like it's about time to revisit a lot of these regulations. When our elected officials create laws that regulate what we can and cannot own, you are taking away one of our inalienable rights. It is a right to be able to, to own things, and it is our right to be able to feed our families in the way that we see best, with fresh eggs if we choose. And as I said in the beginning, our founders created a government and a constitution that was to ensure our inalienable rights were protected, not taken away. Perhaps there was a time when the citizens of Palm Coast wanted these regulations, but I'm certain there is sufficient interest now to revisit the issue and let the people decide.
Thank you for your comment. Any remaining members of, yes, sir.
Gary Kunis, C-section. You all really take under consideration of having fetching plates put on lawnmowers for anybody cutting lawns near the canals. We've talked about this before, and it's out of hand. The amount of grass that's being dumped in the canals against your ordinance is outrageous. The leaf blowers, they now have leave vacuums. Turn a valve and it becomes a vacuum. Vacuum it up and put it out for Wednesday grass pickup, instead of dumping it in the canals. It's out of hand. I was on patrol last week, and the sheriff's boat went around the corner. They were cutting blocks. The canal was covered with concrete dust that has silica in it. Silica causes lung cancer. When it gets in the water, it solidifies. You can't filter it out. The fish eat it. People catch the fish and eat the fish. What do they get? Silica. That easy. You need to do something. There's restraints there. The, the people doing it don't care. They let it spread all over the place.
Thank you for your comment. Any remaining members of the public that would like to comment on items that are not on the future agenda?
I wasn't gonna speak, my name is Ginny Arroyo. I wasn't gonna speak about this, but with all the people about the chickens, I had approached everybody for chickens, too. We have turkeys with their babies running on our front stoop, and they're bigger birds. I've had chickens in the past when I lived in New York. They're very quiet if they're the hens. And, just like that young lady said, they just cluck very, very low, so, and if, an average egg in a supermarket is over a month old before you even get it. So if you have, you can make your own organic eggs. You know the price of organic eggs? Five, six dollars a dozen. There are food shortages that are coming our way. I think it would be wise for the citizens here, if you would allow them, if they have the chickens with the proper thing, of course, in the backyard, you wouldn't even know they had them. Okay, that's it.
Thank you for your comment. Any other residents, uh, in the public that would like to address city council at this Seeing no one come forward, I will close this section of, uh, public comment. And I would ask now item F on the agenda. We have the minutes of the city council of March 21st, 2023, a business meeting. May I have a, a motion, please?
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor Danko to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please by say, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Does the clerk have the count?
Yes, motion passes 5 to 0.
Thank you. And we also have the minutes of the special budget workshop, which was held on March the 28th, 2023. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make the motion on that, too.
Vice Mayor Danko, again, the motion, and Councilman Kalufus, the second. Uh, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Are there any opposed? Clerk have the count.
Yes, motion passes 5 to 0.
Very good. Okay, the minutes are concluded. Now, before we begin with the council business portion of the meeting, I want to take a moment to discuss city council processes related to approval or denial of items presented to city council at all business meetings. For each workshop, city council receives a comprehensive overview of each item. At that time, it is council's opportunity to provide opinions and ask questions on each item. Just as a reminder, items that are quasi-judicial in nature will require council to base their decisions on only what is presented at the scheduled public hearings conducted at the scheduled business meetings. The purpose of the business meeting is for council to review and weigh all the evidence and take action with decisions based on all information presented both at the prior workshop and today. With that, I will ask for each of you to please respect each other's speakers' comments and time. Hold your thoughts and applause until it's your time to speak. And I will ask council to please read in the first ordinance of reading this evening, item number G B, the voluntary annexation of, go ahead.
Yes, this is item number eight on the agenda. Uh, the annexation of GeoSam properties, application number 5362. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida to annex property to be included within the corporate area and city limits of the city of Palm Coast, providing for the annexation of approximately 62.11 acres of the property described in Exhibit A to this ordinance, and lying in the areas proximate to the existing city limits of the city of Palm Coast, Flagler County, Florida. Providing for annexation in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of Section 171.044 Florida statutes, providing for annexation of real property, amendment of corporate city limits, providing for rights and privileges resulting from annexation, effective annexation upon land uses, providing for effect on ad valorem taxes, providing for effect on businesses and occupations, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, counselor. And, uh, Mr. Tyner, I believe you have a presentation for us, if you would go ahead and proceed.
Yes, sir. Good evening, city council members. I'm Ray Tyner, the chief development officer. Uh, this is for a, um, a, a, hold on here, I'm sorry. This is the wrong. Got it here. Sorry about that. Uh, this is for a voluntary annexation. Uh, the petitioner is GeoSam Capital Florida. The property is approximately six point, um, 62.1 acre parcel. It's, uh, 2.5 miles south on, uh, State Road, uh, of, uh, south of State Road 100 on Old Kings Road. It's very south. You can see it is highlighted in the, the red area, uh, just, um, abutting the, uh, city property. It butts the, uh, city, uh, boundary to, to the north. What city staff did is, uh, when the annexation petition comes in, our analysis is just through the Chapter 171 044 of Florida statutes to make sure it does comply with state statute, and we have analyzed it, um, specifically, uh, section one of this, that, that the owner or owners of real property in an unincorporated area of a county which is contiguous to a municipality and reasonably comp- compact may petition the governing body of said municipality that said property be annexed into a municipality. The staff finding is that the subject property is contiguous, as we depicted on the map, uh, of the northern property line of the city of Palm Coast municipality boundary, and the property is reasonably compact. Another criteria is that land shall not be annexed through voluntary annexation when such annexation results in the creation of an enclave. Staff's finding is the annexation of the property does not create an enclave. Uh, the parcel is, again, contiguous, it's not a balloon, it's not like a, a flag, flaglot, um, it's not, it's, um, abutting the city property. So staff's conclusion is that the petition from GeoSam Capital Florida US LLC to annex approximately 62.1 acres meets the criteria. annex approximately 62.1 acres meets the criteria established in the Florida statutes, specifically Chapter 171.044 for voluntary annexation. And the applicant is also here, Mayor and City Council for a presentation as well.
That concludes your presentation?
Yes, sir.
So questions from City Council first before -- do you want the applicant to present now or do you want to have some questions, Mr. Tyner?
The applicant's ready to present. I think they have -- the applicant can present.
Ready to present?
They have more information.
Please. Okay. Any questions at this point or do you want to wait until -- wait?
No questions.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, fellow City Council members. Matt Lottie, Gulfstream Design Group, 2225 State Road A1A South.
Could you please speak a little louder?
Sure.
Thanks.
Thank you for taking the time tonight. Staff's been a pleasure to work through with this project and others. As Mr. Tyner mentioned, this is an applicant-owned piece of property off of Old Kings Road owned by G S M Capital. Site is currently within Flagler County. It's approved for 231 units. G S M has recently developed the Colbert Landings Project at the intersection of State Road 100 and Colbert Lane, done other projects in the area, and they're definitely committed to a quality product here. Site's located south of State Road 100, north of the Volusia County Line, east of 95. This is an area of the site here. Boundary there on our northern boundary, north of the existing Beelo Plantation, and the site will be served with utilities from the FGUA. However, that water will be provided by the City of Palm Coast to FGUA. There was a previously approved master development plan for this site with the 231 units, some commercial, some single-family units in there. As Mr. Tyner mentioned, we're requesting the voluntary annexation to support a 213-lot single-family subdivision with the full understanding that we're going to work with staff and work through potential comprehensive plan amendment, the rezoning to SFR1 subdivision master plan, and the ultimate preliminary plat process. This is our proposed plan with the conversion to all single-family units, no commercial, no townhomes, all consistent with the City of Palm Coast SFR1 zoning category. Some benefits of annexation, the applicant truly sees the progress of the City of Palm Coast as a municipality and would choose their ultimate preferences to develop within the city. City of Palm Coast land development code in its core is a bit more reflective of current development practices. Working within the straight zoning doesn't require architectural review board, predefined setbacks, predefined buffers, and how each law will be developed. Ultimately, a decrease in density, a decrease in trip generation from the current entitlements. And as Mr. Tyner mentioned, one of the criteria, one of the annexation benefits is some increased tax base for the city. Just a quick traffic analysis, so you can see the 231 previous residential units would generate about 2,100 daily trips, 3,600 square feet of commercial, just under 2,000 for a total of about 4,000 trips generated by this project under the current entitlements in Flagler County. Proposed 213 residential units would generate about 2,009 average daily trips. Just a quick run on the taxes here, based on the 213 units, would generate about $337,000 annually for the city in additional tax base. Our proposed zoning is there in the white. I'm scared to touch this, so there you go. Not working on the screen. Anyways, our SFR1 zoning is light there on the presentation, as you can see, directly contiguous to the City of Palm Coast. And with that, we're here for any questions you might have.
Yeah, if I may, my first question is, it's unusual for me to listen to an annexation request for properties that are in unincorporated Flagler wanting to annex into the City of Palm Coast in advance of, I guess, site planning or any of that. Is that -- Mr. Tyner, is that, is this unusual or am I just misreading it?
No, sir. It's not unusual.
Not unusual?
No, sir. You know, some, you know, some annexations that we have done does currently have entitlements in the county. So when they are annexed, they definitely have to go through the city process. We have to go through our zoning code and rezone the property and do a comp plan amendment on it as well to correlate with the city's comp plan and zoning designations.
So what is the -- just help me with this. What is the advantage to the developer to annex into the City of Palm Coast instead of working with Mr. Mengele on the planning for unincorporated Flagler? Because the water is already set with FGUA, right?
Yeah, I mean, this is one of those properties. You know, we had the settlement agreement in 2007 that does require annexation for certain properties to receive city water. This property is not one of them. They are not required to annex into the City of Palm Coast.
Now, may I ask a question? Does that exclude them from the increased rate base of being not included in the city limits on what they would pay their water bill?
You know, I think Mr. Flanagan, because we are, I think, working on agreement with FGUA, I think Mr. Flanagan may be able to answer that. I don't know. They would be outside, so I don't know in this circumstance if that would be the case.
Understood.
I'm sorry. Questions from City Council on the development?
What's -- I like the increase in tax revenue, obviously, but what are the other advantages, Ray, for us doing this?
Well, we didn't analyze for the advantages. We analyzed, we had a petition, so we were bound by analyzing, do they meet state statute? So it really does become a issue. I think the applicant or the petitioner has stated that clearly tax revenues coming into the City of Palm Coast is probably the clear advantage to the City of Palm Coast.
I've received a couple of emails anyway from residents who don't want this to happen. So I'd kind of like to know if they're here tonight and if they're going to speak during public comment. I see some hands, so I'll reserve the rest of my questions.
Why should we reserve that? And Vice Mayor, I mean, I think your point is well taken. So, Mr. Tyner, certainly, you know, we appreciate the advance in, or the advancement of ad valorem tax in order to fulfill the budget obligations. But, you know, I question the lack of any commercial part of this. It's my understanding, looking back in history, that there was a commercial time?
I believe that their existing master plan development, or PUD they call it in the county, that'd be a question for the petitioner here, but I do believe that their entitlements now that they have an existing PUD that also has a commercial component, I believe.
So help me with my question.
Mayor, maybe if I could just step in.
Please. I don't want to get outside of my boundaries here, but help me with this.
So annexations, this is the way that annexation should work. I mean, I think you guys have got these pre-annexation agreements previously before people have annexed in. That is not typical. It's allowed for under our code if you're within the area, utility area where we require annexation to receive utility services. Typically, though, annexations are up to the local government, up to you all as the policies makers, to decide if you want to annex in a piece of property and add it to your boundary. The only, the statute sets out like four things that you have to consider, and that is that the property has to be contiguous to the city boundary, it has to be reasonably compact to the city boundary, it can't create an enclave, and you have to have the signatures of all property owners. So those are very basic things as far as the statutory guidance goes of what you consider.
I'm sorry, we have, every property owner has to approve this?
No.
That's signatures of all the property owners?
Of the owner of the property that's coming in to be annexed. They have to be, everybody has to approve if you're an owner of that property.
The petitioner?
The petitioner.
Got it. Okay.
Okay, Counselor, I --
So that's the standard.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And so you all will make the decision as to whether you want, as long as they check those boxes, they can be annexed, but ultimately it's up to you to decide if you want to annex.
So the --
Requirement for us to go.
No, no, but so the other part I think the council is trying to help us with is that, so there are those four check boxes, which are pretty straightforward, and we certainly want to, you know, walk down the center of the legal path here. The zoning, the site planning, and all of the details would come at a later phase in the development project. And if you, are you able to estimate, well, it's not important when that happens, that would be a requirement before any development could possibly, before a development order could possibly be issued. So this is a straight annexation question based on four criteria, which are fairly straightforward. And I guess I would just ask you, why do you want to annex in?
Working within the bounds of the City of Palm Coast, as I mentioned before, with the Colbert Landings Project development team, really enjoyed working with city staff. This project, it has entitlements, right? So this is a request to annex into the city and abide by the city policies instead of utilizing the county policies, right? So it's not a matter of is the project going to happen or not. It's a matter of does it happen in the county or does it happen in the city? Just being clear for the residents, right? This isn't, you know, we're just trying to bring this to the city.
Your preference is to work with the zoning requirements of the city because you find them more favorable for your development? If I'm out of bounds, just tell me.
Well, they don't have any, at this point, they only have county entitlements. Once they're annexed, then they have to go through a rezoning, as Mr. Tyner said, and a comp plan amendment to set what will be allowed on the property.
So this goes through planning, this comes back to us?
Right. And typically, you know, typically what happens is a property comes in and they take, there's a, like a corresponding zoning designation between the city and the county, and it's given that designation.
Chickens? Sorry. I take that back. Are there any additional questions from City Council at this time?
I'll hold till after publication.
Mr. Flanagan, do you mind answering the question about the water?
Yes, what was the specific question? Could you repeat it for me?
Because of the agreement that has already been existing with this property, does that exclude them from the additional rate fee that they would have to pay to be served since they're outside of the city boundaries?
Okay, so right now, we're working with FGUA in the FGUA service area. This property is within the FGUA service area. In that agreement with FGUA, it's a bulk agreement, so there is no surcharge in any of our bulk agreements. So this customer would not get a surcharge. They would pay whatever rate FGUA currently charges while they're in the FGUA service area.
But we provide the water to FGUA, is that correct?
That's correct.
Well, we will. We have an agreement to do it. But there's some infrastructure improvements that need to be made before that can happen.
Counselor, if I may ask the question then, so FGUA has been in process negotiation for as long as I can remember now. Are we, is water going to be available to these folks?
Within a certain timeframe. I would estimate that timeframe to be roughly two years.
Okay, so that's reasonable. Okay, because I, it's been going on for how long now?
Five, eight?
Yeah, okay. All right. But you have, to the best of your knowledge, you think that those negotiations could be completed with a --
We have an agreement. We have an agreement with FGUA.
I know we have an agreement, but we don't have any water. There's no water flowing yet.
Right. But there's timeframes set out in the agreement to abide by to put in the infrastructure.
Which may breach the agreement and there's still no water flowing. That's what I'm trying to get to. When is the water going to flow?
Oh.
Roughly two years.
Two years, okay.
We did just recently, just so you see.
It won't do you any good if you don't have any water either.
Understood. And there's a --
Progress being made. We did just meet recently, last week, with the design firm that's going to design the improvements.
Okay. All right, so we've got some --
Things are progressing.
We've got some ends to tie up before this project can really move. Okay, very good. I'm sorry, you want to wait for public comment?
I have no questions at this time.
I do have one question. This is for council. Do we know pursuant to the statute what is considered reasonably compact as far as checking these boxes that we're checking?
Yeah, so there's been a lot, you know, not a lot, but there is limited case law on annexations. And basically, you know, if you're asking, is there, you know, 75% of the property boundary has to be adjacent to the city? No, there's not a standard like that. And reasonably, as you can imagine, is pretty loosey-goosey, but it just generally means, you know, that it's compact to the city boundary and doesn't have pieces that maybe come out and would result in the creation of an enclave. At this point, we don't have that now. If a property to the south touched a corner or something like that would happen, that wouldn't be considered reasonably compact, and it would also create an enclave in this particular area. So, okay, thank you.
All right, and I want to thank the developer for being present to answer our questions. With that, I'm going to open up this agenda item to public comment. So are there members of the public that would like to address City Council at this time?
Robin McDonald, Palm Coast. I'm going to ask a question, and I know the question is supposed to be directed to the mayor, but the mayor's not going to be able to answer my question no matter how hard he tries. There's only one person sitting in his room right now who's going to be able to answer my question, and that's Chief of the Fire Department, Chief Berryhill. My question to Chief Berryhill through the mayor is if this project gets approved, how much more of a fire load is it going to put on our firefighters? And what's going to be the response time from the local, from the closest firehouse? Because it's going to be a haul. I mean, our guys are quick, but it's, if this thing goes up and it's ripping, we're going to have a major problem. So, like I said, out of respect for the mayor, that man sitting back there, he's going to be the only one that's going to be able to tell me right to my face how long it's going to take.
Right.
And how much more fire load, firework is they're going to --
Let me help you with the question. Chief Berryhill is not prepared to answer that question. Let me explain why. The question you're asking will naturally fall in a later part of the development process. We're only talking about annexation of raw land, of dirt. The actual configuration and site planning for the property, which would then go to Mr. Chief Berryhill in terms of the answer to your question, would come at a later date. It will come, so if you would hold your question or speak to him after the meeting, he'll tell you what steps are necessary before he could answer your question.
So again, out of respect?
Yes.
So now we're going to try to close the horse, to close the barn door after horses are gone?
No, sir. No, sir. There's a piece of land, raw land, being annexed into the city. That's it. Nothing on it.
And how long before it gets built on?
We don't know. We don't know. There was a next speaker, I think? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. For the record, my name is Charlie Faulkner. I'm here representing the Flagler Beach Polo Club West Homeowners Association. Not all tracts of land, and particularly lands with entitlements are created equal. Certain pieces of land have certain attributes that make them unique and high quality. Others don't have those attributes, and they're not such high quality. The existing PUD on the, on the piece of land that you're looking at right now to annex, the PUD was created in 2007, and I'm a little familiar with it because I was the project manager that created it. And I did extensive lobbying to the, to my client, the property owner at the time, to include some essential elements so that we could genuinely produce a high-quality development. The parcel itself is somewhat unique in that it's on an ancient sand dune, actually, with some unique geographic, several depressions on it that go down as deep as 15 feet from the ground surface. Those depressions are underneath a beautiful oak canopy, and when I walked the land to look at it, I just couldn't bring myself to come up with a concept plan that was going to result in all those trees getting cut down. So what I did, because I have a unique situation -- So what I did, because I have a unique situation, the water table was about 20 feet, 18 to 20 feet below the surface, we incorporated those depressions to save those trees, we made, we included them in the stormwater retention ponds. We could get away with doing that, and the trees would survive inundation, because literally, uh, as soon as the storm was over, those, those retention ponds are gonna be dry, like the big one that is already there today. We also included a substantial, um, amenity package in three different areas, we also included, um, ma- uh, a, a small portion of neighborhood commercial to mitigate some traffic congestion that is gonna take place on that Old Kings Corridor as more rooftops get built. We integrated them all together with a trail. Little over a year ago, the existing applicant, the existing owner, uh, made application to Flagler County to amend the PU, existing PUD. Among other changes, they were gonna exclude and get rid of everything that I just talked about. They got significant pushback from Flagler County. If you as council decided it's in the city's best interest to annex, we would ask that you protect us, the Polo Club, our main entrance goes right through this PUD.
Thank you for your comment. Is there another member of the public that would like to address city council on this agenda item at this time? Yes, sir?
Yes, that's the Larry Palm Coast, I have just two quick questions. Parcel is empty at this time, and what is paying the county, and how much is that? The tax revenue? And the second question is, how can they present what our tax revenue would be when we still haven't know, know what services will be provided, what the cost of those services will be, staff additions, et cetera, something like that.
Thank you for your, uh, comment, next speaker, please.
Thomas Cook, been a resident of Flagler County since 1977, I'm a current and long most longstanding board member of the Flagler Beach Polo Club West. To fill in a couple more blanks on, uh, Mr. Faulkner's conversation, 13 short months ago, when we knew this same applicant was going to Flagler County, we actually, as a board, reached out to them proactively, uh, to see if we could get a meeting, to see what their intentions were, to work with them, to, to develop communications. And the reason for that is, we're not just an adjoining community, we're literally integrated. Flagler Beach Polo Club is literally integrated with Old Kings Village, we share an entry road. The original entitlements, which they purchased with the land, had amenities, we have the right, Flagler Beach Polo Club residents have the right to those amenities, currently in the entitlements. The, uh, commercial piece that we talked about, we think could make an incredibly unique, uh, and, and very sought-after type of community for that part of Flagler County. So we reached out to those representatives, got some reluctance, but we finally got the meeting, in fact, I was in the meeting with other representatives of the Polo Club. That meeting did not go well, we were very professional, we wanted to listen, they, quite frankly, were somewhat arrogant, they were gonna do, or at least they felt they were gonna do what they wanted to do. I could pull out their site plan, which doesn't look a whole lot different than when I just saw that screen, removing the commercial, all the amenities, completely different site plan than the hand that they basically, you know, dealt themselves when they purchased the property on the current entitlements. Uh, no mention, no really olive branch, we offered to maybe put a little meeting together with the residents of our community, a little public forum, no interest, no interest whatsoever. Moments later, they went to Flagler County to a TRC meeting with a new revised site plan, and it did not go well. I was a little amused when the representative tonight, quite frankly, said he felt more comfortable working with Palm Coast than he did Flagler County, and I certainly understand the reason for that. Here's the bottom line, 34 residents purchased five-acre plots in Polo Club West. Those lots originally sold almost 15, 17 years ago for 250 to 300 grand apiece, they're now approaching a half a million apiece. There are lots of homes that have been built, there's lots under construction, some of those homes in there are really into the millions now of dollars, and many of those, or most of those homeowners that are investing that kind of money in their future in that community did so based on what they felt the entitlements were and the development standards of Old Kings Village.
Thank you for your comments.
So I would ask you that you would really be sensitive about that going forward, thanks so much.
Um, are there other members of the public that would like to address this agenda item? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, council members. Before I start, I want to thank Mr. Tyner for his professional responsibilities, I've dealt with him in the past, and I think he's an asset to our community, Mr. Tyner. Uh, I, I'm a very practical person, as you well know, I'm looking at this as the tax revenue of $337,000 per year for 200 single-family, uh, units, and, and my question is very simple, I've, I've been through quite a few hurricanes here, uh, we have lived here in Palm Coast since 1979, and we've seen evacuation after evacuation, and one of my concerns when I saw that on the map, what is the egress and access to that community, what happens if they have to get out? My second, my second thought is, 213 single-family, that, that probably equals about 350 vehicles coming in and out of that community onto Old Kings Road, and there is, Old Kings Road is the one serviceability road, uh, to that community and everybody down there, that seems to me be, to be problematic. Uh, the other thing is, uh, with regards to, uh, the water and the sewer, which is not available now, but if the city annexes it, it'll be on our back to fund that, what will be that cost, and then $337,000 per year revenue, what is the payback to the city for that? We have some very serious financial considerations, just from a macro, uh, position, taking a look at this, I'm very concerned about this for the community and what it's, what it speaks to. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment, and, Mr. Tyner, um, those questions would naturally become a part of the process that you go through many different phases and layers.
Yes, sir.
So it's, uh, there's, there, none of those details exist today to answer those questions yet, but they will be all considered by city staff, then brought to city council before any project could ever move forward. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm Sally Arnoff, and I lead a group, Citizens Monitoring Developments, we have over 200 that are following this matter, and we are focused on the southeast quadrant of Flagler County, so this is in the heart of what we are, have been following. I have several questions, one is, who's going to bear the cost of bringing the utilities that far south? According to what has been presented in engineering specs, there are two linear miles of water pipe and three linear miles of sewage, that doesn't come cheap to install, so, is the town, a city of Palm Coast, going to front that bill to take the water under 95 and across Moody, south for three, over three miles, so that FGUA can have that water? FGUA has no capacity whatsoever, they can't add one more house for either water or sewer. But you have to take it to them, or the developer will have to pay for it, I don't know if you are at a point where you can answer that question. Uh, the other is, you were talking about, or the developer was talking about the design firm, I would like to know which design firm, because Radiance is right across the street, literally, an entrance of Radiance Development, and they are 1,700 homes, is going to be across from the entrance to the Polo Club. The design firm has presented to Radiance CDD a bid saying that it'll be over a million dollars in just design fees, and they were the ones that came up with the linear miles that the piping will have to go in. Now, all of this is before there's any construction and to pay for that pipe to go in the ground, so who's paying it?
Go ahead, finish your question.
Okay, Radiance, in their literature, they say they are paying all of that, that the, uh, city has required them to pay the design fee. The only other thing that I wanted to share is, Colbert Landings has been mentioned, Colbert Landings is no longer owned by GeoSam, they sold it to another developer.
Thank you for your comment, uh, Mr. Tyner, did you want to comment on FGUA?
I think, uh, Mr. Flanagan, as far as the cost and that, he, he would probably have those answers, Mayor, I don't, I don't know.
Mr. Flanagan, can you get with the, uh, with the resident and kinda go through those, it's, it's early, I understand, so, you follow up there for us? Are there any other members of the public that would like to address city council at this time, on this agenda item? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close this, uh, section of public comment, and I will come back to the deas to city council. So, Vice Mayor, I guess we'll start with you, are there additional questions?
I have concerns-
Yep.
Especially after hearing Charlie Faulkner speak, who I respect incredibly, I'm getting the impression, and if someone can convince me otherwise, please, during this conversation, but are we getting something because the county doesn't like what they're going to do? Are they trying to pass that on to us? And that is my concern, um, 'cause the county, 'cause mommy says no, they come running to daddy, is, is that the situation here? And I don't know, but I, I need to have that answered before I can move forward.
So, I, I, I don't want to be referring to as precedent, um, let's-
I'm referring to-
Yeah, no, no, I, I, no, I understand, I got it, I got it. Um, and I have a, I'm gonna offer you a, a solution in just a minute.
Sure.
Um, so, Mayor, or Vice Mayor, your point's well taken, because I'm also concerned, and I'll, I'll wait, Mayor, if you have an answer to this, um, that where you usurp being the authority of the county and allowing a developer to go straight to the city, um, so, I, and I have other questions for the applicant as well, but, I'm almost wondering if we should contact the county and maybe table today's decision until we hear from the county on this, so that we ensure we're making a good decision. Um, and, just in case, that is not the decision from the deas here today, I would like to hear, um, if the applicant can come to the podium, I do have some questions, I don't know where he went.
Thank you.
Did he leave?
Uh, Council President-
Oh, he's right there.
Oh.
I do have a few questions for the applicant, sorry. And I, I do understand that we, we're not supposed to be considering what, technically, what the site, the future site plan is going to entail, however, I also know that this is not a shall decision, we don't have to grant annexation just because the statute's boxes are just-
If you, if you would, the just, if we could confine our discussion to the, the annexation point, so that we're, we're doing it correctly.
Okay, um, in that case, then, I don't have any questions for you at this time, I just, um, do want to point out that it's not a shall, it's, it's a may.
I have no questions at this time.
None at this time.
Okay, um, well, the developer's here. So I see, I have, uh, Mr. Mengele in the audience from the county, um, is here listening in, uh, we had public comment, um, Mr. Flanagan probably can shed some information, um, Ray, I, I thank staff, I, I know you guys worked very hard on this, I have to admit, I feel unprepared at this moment to make as good a decision as I think I really should, so, with respect to the developer, uh, builder, I'm gonna ask that we table this.
Do we need a motion? Cause I'll make it.
Yes, I've gotta, hold on, um, and I'm not looking to, I'm not looking to extend this out, but, I need, I think I hear that you all have some additional questions and information, which I think are going to be available, and my guess is, Ray, you've worked through this with all that you've done with staff, I don't think that we can do it here at this moment, at this public meeting, so, I am gonna ask if there would be a motion that would consider tabling this, uh, until the next earliest date that we could, uh, consider it.
And I'll second.
Okay, um-
I would just comment that I think it's a priority of our council that we should be very, um, aware of the impacts of development in the, you know, Beulah Creek area, so.
Yes.
All right, hold on, I want to hear from Mr. Tyner before we go forward.
Yeah, I just want a clear direction-
Yeah, please.
Mayor, um, so, you know, if it's continued, I'm hearing that we should go back to the county and get, get information and bring that back.
So let me give you, let me give you a clearer direction, um, what is the motion?
To table this-
And?
And we get some additional information, my concern really-
From, from staff?
From staff, yes.
And you will submit questions to staff?
Sure, we can do that.
And I would just, um, to kind of add on to that, in conjunction with, um, maybe a representative from the county to provide a little bit of background or history with regards of-
Which could be one of your questions to staff, but they'll do, intercede, okay? Fair enough with everyone?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I hope the, the developer understands, so, we, we, we have some more information that we're going to ask to, uh, through our staff, you can work with staff, continue to work with staff, and then this will appear on the next possible agenda when we have that information.
Uh, Mayor, just, just a point of clarification, so we're tabling this item, it's gonna be required under the annexation statute to be re-noticed, so, um, we can say, table the item to the, to, to when we can hold the public hearing, given the notice requirements for annexation.
So will you add that to your motion?
Sure, absolutely.
Very good, okay, so we have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Um, do I have to go have the public comment again for this?
No.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? Does the clerk have the count?
Motion, Kansas, five to zero.
Thank you. We now move to item, uh, resolutions, uh, Counselor, if you would do number nine for us, please.
This is agenda item number nine, a resolution considering the city council meeting invocation policy, a resolution of the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, adopting the city of Palm Coast meeting invocation policy, authorizing the city manager to take certain actions to implement, implement the policy, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for implementing actions, and providing for an effective date. City council, as you remember, this item was presented to you at the, um, last workshop meeting that we had, not the budget meeting, but the workshop before that, and as you requested, um, there were a couple things, you requested that I make a few changes to the policy, and then you also asked me to work with council member, Callie Pontieri, um, on some additional revisions, if those were necessary, so I've done as requested. All those, um, changes to the last, um, draft have been made, they are in your agenda, attached to the resolution, and I'll just go through them quickly as to what was done. Um, first, the request was to make the policy applicable to the workshop meetings in addition to the business meetings, which has been done. Um, the second request was to add the word religious to section three, um, to state, invocation shall be voluntary, delivered by a local clergy member, religious leader, or community religious leader. That has been added, um, in section- Uh, five, if the invocation speaker, if there's no invocation speaker, speaker for a particular meeting, um, the city council will supplement for a moment, with a moment of silence, the "may" was removed, and the last change was, um, section three B, which was concerning the city clerk sending an invitation, um, to, in addition to the website notice, of sending out letters to those, um, congregations that may be interested in forming them of this policy, that has been removed, and that, the reason for that is, um, after further review of some of the case law, and I'll get into that a little bit more, um, this would help avoid any potential claims that the city was in some way contacting certain congregations and not others, so it takes that away, and it just puts the burden on, uh, the congregations that fall within the city of Palm Coast, or, you know, within Flagler County, to contact the city if they're interested in providing an invocation. And finally, um, I added language in the agreement in the first kind of, um, purpose section, just, um, putting in the controlling case in the 11th- putting in the controlling case in the 11th district. Right now, we are located within the 11th district, as you know. And the controlling case in, in the 11th district concerning exclusion, concerning invocation speakers and choosing invocation speakers, is the general premise, as I talked about before in my presentation, that there can be no exclusion based on the nature of the belief. So in this case, and I'll just describe it a little bit further, the county commissioners in that case were given the authority to choose the invocation speakers on a rotating basis. This was challenged, this procedure was challenged. And then the court found that nearly all the commissioners had exercised their authority to exclude some religions. And they, and on others, they placed additional burdens that they didn't place on other religions. And that really broke down to the commissioners in that case, when they were testifying, stated on the record that they would not allow for invocation speakers coming from certain polytheistic religions, people that believe in more than one God, Wiccans, deism, Rastafarians. They all stated that they wouldn't allow religious leaders from those religions to do an invocation. And that is what the court found to be not in compliance with the Establishment Clause.
Good question, Counselor.
Sure.
Where is that case now? I mean, has it been appealed?
Oh, no. Mm-mm. That's good law now. For the, that's the controlling law in the 11th district. There's been no appeal. And I believe it's from 2019. So there's no appeal on that. So this is all to say, and kind of drive home the, what I was speaking about at the workshop, is that if adopted, it's going to be very important to correctly implement this policy. Because we need to ensure that the city does not violate the principle of denominational neutrality in the Establishment Clause. So as I said in my previous presentation, once you open the door to one, you have to open the door to all. And while the policy that I've drafted, I believe, will withstand constitutional muster, it's going to be imperative that it be exercised in a manner that allows for any religious congregation to send a leader to come in and do the invocation policy. Whether or not you agree with that religious belief or not, they will be, they will have the right, under the Establishment Clause, to come in and be an invocation speaker. We will not be able to prohibit them from doing so. So with that being said, I am open for any questions on the changes that I made or the presentation.
Well, you can, I have a procedural question, if I can.
Yes, sure.
The way I understand the policy that you've just described, it would be up to our city clerk to validate the person scheduled to do an invocation.
Well, as far as validate, it's more, the only standard is that you confirm that they're within the City of Palm Coast and Flagler County, yeah.
That they live, period.
But, yeah, that's where the religious.
That's not what, that's not what you said. Okay, let's back up. So how is our city clerk qualified, trained, or knowingly able to confirm the religious affiliation that you mentioned in your policy? Because it's my understanding that I could go online now and before the end of this meeting, become a religious leader.
Well, and that, that may be so. We don't have standards.
And I, and I'm not, listen, I'm not attacking the concept. What I'm trying to get at here is, are we, why don't, is the policy correct? Or maybe there's no such thing.
There's, there's no policy, I don't, do not believe that there's a policy that we can implement with those restrictions, size restrictions on congregations, locational, that it's within the City of Palm Coast and Flagler County. That type of requirement has been allowed for in previous cases.
If I may too, so just to kind of piggyback on your inquiry, Mayor, so is it your opinion, Counsel, that the definition of religion may not be what we think of it in the traditional sense, but is more broad from a legal standpoint?
I mean, it just depends on what your traditional sense of religion is. If your traditional sense of religion is, you know, a monotheistic religion like Christianity or Judaism, yes, then you may feel like the definition of religion that we're using in this policy is what you think it is, as far as your religion. But that's not what someone who is of another religion, such as Hinduism, which practices a polytheistic religion with multiple gods, what that person thinks of as religion includes their own religion. So that's kind of a subjective question, but under the Establishment Clause and, and the case law on this matter, it's, there hasn't been any case law that specifically stated, no, this is not a religion for this purpose.
May I also ask, there wouldn't be a ceiling or a floor on the number of participants in this religion either, right? So if someone was claiming that they had their own ideology of whatever religion they claim to create, they don't need, have to have a mass of followers to be able to be considered a religion, correct or incorrect?
Typically, no. I will use the correct language is for, it's a closely held religious belief. So there's no, you know, threshold of number of people in the congregation. Is it five? Is it 100? There's no threshold on that.
Counselor, are you saying that we can't use our common sense here? I mean, if some moron in a rusted-out double-wide puts on a set of horns and wants to come up here and preach the devil, we just have to roll over and say, okay? Or can we use a little bit of judgment?
I, I, I would say that if we had a question about whether, if we were approached by some person that said they had a religious congregation within the City of Palm Coast, and we looked at that, and frankly, the city clerk came to me and asked me the question, I would have to research it as far as what is the case law say? I mean, you know, my job is to make sure that the city, my, my only job, and what you hired me, what I'm here for, is to make sure that I protect the city from potential liability.
Sure, I understand.
So I cannot say, well, in that case, no, we wouldn't have to let him because X, Y, or Z, because I, I can't say that. I don't know.
Well, then perhaps we would have to make that decision as a council.
Well, as we talked about before, I mean, as we talked about before, there are standards within the policy for invocation speakers. You can only speak for a minute. You can't prophesize. You can't, you know, put forth your religion or say something bad about another religion. I mean, there are, there are restrictions on what, what you can say to an extent.
So whether we have a reverend, a rabbi, a priest, a minister, whether it's, you know, whatever religion, they're basically, basically have to do an invocation that basically asks above, God above, to give us some guidance, correct?
God, gods.
Gods, gods, whatever. But they can't come in here and slander another religion.
Right.
They can't come in here and push their beliefs on the people of Palm Coast or this council. All right? It's a respectful process, correct? It has to be, or we could cut it off.
Right. If they weren't meeting the requirements that we have in here, which is, let me read it. "Invocation may be secular or non-secular in nature. Invocations may not be used to advance or disparage any particular religion, faith, or belief. Invocation should be considerate of all Palm Coast residents and must display a respectful attitude towards all peoples of religion, raised national origin, sex, gender, or ability."
Pretty simple.
Other comments from City Council, it's gonna come to public comment in a moment. Any questions now? So I, I'm gonna make a comment, because I can't hold back. And Vice Mayor, with all due respect and deference, just listen to my, my comment here, because this one, I'm going to open up for a moment and go to a place that I rarely ever go to in public. So when I respect a moment of silence following our pledge of allegiance, I pray for a young man who gave his life and his partner's life to put bad people in jail, and to protect our children, and to go after drug traffickers, and quite frankly, to help us corral child pornographers. I also pray to another young man who was a first responder at Marjorie Stoneman Douglas, who was the first team in, and made sure that even more people weren't killed. I also pray during that moment of silence for my fellow council member Hyder's son, who lost his life defending our country. I also pray for my fellow councilperson Pontier, whose husband is a first responder. I, for one, find great wholeness in being able to say the prayer that I need to say for myself. I've spent the better part of seventy, seven decades, I should say seventy, seven decades trying to figure out what I need to do and, and who I am. And I use that time with great, great respect, and it means everything to me. Now, I am only one City Council member. I feel the moment of silence is incredibly important, but again, I can only speak for myself. So with that, I would ask if there's any other questions now, or should we go right to public comment?
Public comment.
I'll wait for the public comment.
So if I could ask the public to please come forward and make comment on this item.
Robert McDonald, Palm Coast. I've been going to Mass, be seventy years next week. And my mother taught me, when I was a little kid, that there are only two places in this world that are sacred. One being the church of your choice. And the second place is called the firehouse. Those are the two places that are sacred. And since I don't think that we could get a fire truck in this building, and I don't see no crosses here, so the council's gonna vote the way they want to vote. But I want to go on record as saying that this building or this room is not meant for a prayer. You want to pray, go behind that wall and pray whatever you need to pray for. But every night before I close my eyes, I pray. Seventy-two years I've been praying. And like I said before, till the day I die, I don't care what religion it is, I've been to every kind of a church that you can imagine. But when I go in there, I respect it because the guy upstairs, so no matter what you believe in, I don't care what religion it is that you believe in, he's sitting up there all by himself. And like I said, the only other place that's sacred is the firehouse. And I've been to firehouses all over the country. And every time we go on a vacation, my wife says, I know, I know, we gotta go visit, find a firehouse. That's right. So you folks are gonna listen to a whole bunch of people tonight, and hopefully, you're gonna make the right decision. But this is your choice. And like I said, I just want yous all to remember that there's two places in the world that are sacred. Your particular type of religion, or your place of worship, and that firehouse.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Paul Pontorno, and I want to begin by asking everyone to truly understand how sad it is that we are even here to vote on whether or not to open a City Council session with a prayer. What does that say about our country today? Think about that. Let that sink in a little bit. And that is exactly why we need prayer to open the sessions. Just look at what is going on in the nation today as a whole. We are in a spiritual battle of good versus evil. Nowadays, what God of the Holy Bible said is good is looked upon as evil, and vice versa. Our country was founded on Judeo-Christian beliefs. That's a fact and not an opinion. Many of the founding fathers were Bible scholars who were qualified to teach seminary, another fact and not an opinion. Look back in history to the hundreds of quotes of our founders. They are filled with hundreds of mentions of God and Jesus Christ, who, by the way, is the only being in human history to have told us that he is God, another fact and not an opinion. The Lord said in Second Chronicles 7:14, "If my people who are called by my name will humble themselves, and pray, and seek my face, and turn from their wicked ways, then I will hear from heaven, and will forgive their sin, and heal their land." Our nation needs healing today. It began turning away from God the moment the Bible was removed from our public schools. And since then, the incremental removal of him ever since. And ever since then, the degradation of our nation's moral compass. Opening with a prayer is not establishing a religion for all to follow, Counselor. The citizens can worship and follow any God they want. Instead, it shows humility by understanding we need God's blessings and guidance in our decisions. That's what the prayer is for, to guide into decisions here. Once we start believing we can do things on our own, we are finished. Palm Coast will not have God's favor if we deny him and yield to cowardice, pressure, or intimidation. Jesus said in Matthew 10, verse 33, "But whoever denies me before men, him I will also deny before my Father, who is in heaven." A moment of silence is exactly what we do not need. What we need is an opening prayer to the one true God of the Holy Bible, the God our country was founded on, and on the book that every political figure in our nation places his or her right hand on every time they take office. Like it or not, America is a Christian nation. City Council, you have a decision to make, whether to cave to pressure or to honor God. I pray that you make the right decision.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Mike McElroy, Flagler Trump, Republican Assembly. Mr. Mayor, I sent you a letter, and I think a lot of the City Council, if not all, got a copy of that letter. I'm not gonna read it. I'm just gonna go after, go and reiterate what I think are the important points, starting with the notion that this nation was founded on the idea of a Creator. Thomas Jefferson, when he wrote the Declaration of Independence, said, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, and that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that governments are instituted among men to protect those rights." So when we discuss rights, number one, we're discussing rights that come from God according to Thomas Jefferson and our founders in the Declaration of Independence. Two, it's legal. United States Congress and the Florida State Legislature open with a prayer. And finally, I want to say one thing about the notion that a prayer is divisive. One thing I know is we read a lot of polls that Americans are divided on, but when you read the polls that say how many Americans believe in God, it's 81%. Eighty-one percent of Americans believe in God, and I'm sure in Flagler County, it's probably a higher number. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, next speaker, please. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, my name is Carolyn Guggenheim. Can you hear me all right?
I'm sorry.
I said, can you hear me all right?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
As you are all well aware, the enemy, Satan, has succeeded in taking prayer out of our schools, various government institutions, and so many other venues. And as a direct result, we can attest to a major decline throughout all of our systems. The destruction, violence, and decay of our society is evident all around us. Let us change that direction from engulfing our city by adding prayer at the beginning of our committee meetings. We serve a God that wants to help us back to the ways that are pleasing to him. Peace, respect, love, kindness, forbearance, humility, joy, patience, faithfulness, goodness, and self-control. Against these things, there is no law. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Marie Summers. I've lived in Palm Coast for almost eighteen years, and happily so. Thank you for serving as our leaders. Now more than ever, we need leaders who are willing to serve the people of our community in a fair, respectful, and wise manner. I'm here tonight to ask you to support the resolution to open the Palm Coast City Council meetings with an invocation. Please cast a yes vote. I'd also like to share a scripture from the Old Testament book of the prophet Isaiah. It reads, "For the Lord is our judge; the Lord is our law-giver; the Lord is our king. He will save us." Our founding fathers were well acquainted with this verse because they based our constitutional republic, the three branches of government, upon it. The Lord is our judge, thus our judicial system. The Lord is our law-giver, thus our legislative branch. The Lord is our king, our executive branch. Our government is actually based on who God is, or our founding fathers, and he is the model for us today. He is the eternal God, full of righteousness and justice, just as all forms of government should be, including the city of Palm Coast. We need to be a government full of righteousness and justice. We are blessed to be one nation under God, and it behooves us as a people to invoke him for his wisdom so that we may be a city, a county, a state, and a nation that is full of righteousness and justice. Once again, I implore you to vote yes to the resolution to open Palm Coast City Council meetings with an invocation after the pledge of allegiance, which states with veracity that we are one nation under God. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
My name is Joseph Kobaski. I live in Palm Coast for the last twenty-three years, and I think it's time you showed leadership. Do you know what that word means? That means as you go, so goes Palm Coast. They took God out of the schools, they took God out of the public square. If you vote the right way, you will show that you are leaders. The Congress does it, and Tallahassee does it, and there's no reason why you can't do it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Gary Zuger, and I've been a resident here for nine years now. You hear me all right? Thank you for the opportunity to talk and to encourage you to add invocations or prayers at the beginning of future council meetings. Don't we as individuals pray for many things? Don't we pray for our sons and daughters to be safe when they leave our home to go to school? Don't we pray for our children to marry the right man or woman? Or these days, a son to marry a woman or a daughter to marry a man? Don't we pray that our children find the right career, that they will benefit themselves and the community? Don't we pray that our children are safe when driving on our city streets? Don't we even pray sometimes, maybe a lot, that our favorite football team slaughters the opposing team? Therefore, don't you think as city council members you should pray that the decisions you make are wise decisions and that it will have a positive impact on our friends, loved ones, and our community as a whole? Therefore, I encourage you city council members to have enough concern and in these days, courage to institute prayer before God and before you make decisions that will affect us all. And oh, if you're concerned about praying to any fake gods, just pray in the name of the real God, Jesus. And thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and all the council members. Thank you so much for accepting this position.
Just your name for us, for the record, please.
My name is Bonnie Henry, and my husband, myself, Norris, and we pastor a church here in Palm Coast for over twenty-seven years. I've been here since 1989, raised our family. And over the years, the church would invite the mayor if we having special events or different council members to special things that we had at the church. I don't know if they do that nowadays, but that was the relationship we had when I first came here. Just want to say, your position is very important because you're as leaders, the Bible said we should pray for our leaders and those in authority, that we may have a peaceful life. So the blessing that comes to you in your position, the rules and the things that you have to agree to, I've heard many things being said here today, and it needs wisdom, godly wisdom, to make good decisions that will affect, will affect our, you know, our citizens, not just for today, but for years ahead. They may look back and say, "You made this great decision." So prayer is necessary, and so we're asking you to vote yes. We know there are a lot of little, little things that you talked about, but pray and ask for wisdom, for God to give you wisdom and boldness to vote yes. In Psalm 127, verse 1, it says, "Unless God builds a city, the watchman watch in vain." So God has a plan for us as a city, as a nation. So may God bless you in this city and vote yes.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. I'm Nancy Earhart, and I've been in Palm Coast for four years now, and I want to start out by thanking you, council members, and I also want to thank my veterans for allowing me and fighting for me to be able to stand in front of all of you. Throughout the history of the United States, its citizens and inhabitants have drawn strength, hope, and guidance from prayer. From the very first Continental Congress through every form of adversity and blessing, Americans have fallen to their knees and implored God Almighty to protect their families and to heal their land. The freedom upon which America was founded affords the right to any individual to pray anywhere, if he so desires. That same freedom allows those who believe in the power of prayer to utilize that great opportunity to ask God to bless and sustain our city and nation. That freedom is not diminished merely because one is elected to public office. Quite the contrary, the cloak of authority placed upon your shoulders as public servants, which I believe all of you are, should be an inspiration for those who believe in the power of prayer, to use that power to ask God to bless and sustain this city that all of you love and serve. Centuries ago, the Bible records in 2 Corinthians 7:14 that God told King Solomon, "If my people are called by my name and humble themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then I will hear from heaven and will forgive their sin and will hear their land." In early 2005, a small group of members of the United States House of Representatives began meeting in room 219 of the U.S. Capitol to pray for our nation. The location was not important, nor were the names of those who gathered there to pray. The gravity of their meeting was derived from the humble sincerity of their belief that God could heal America. Soon thereafter, these members formed the Congressional Prayer Caucus to diligently watch and to protect the right of individuals in America to pray. Their vision for the caucus inspired them to form the Congressional Prayer Caucus Foundation Incorporated, which is a nonpartisan, nonprofit organization designed to support the call of America back to prayer. In March 2015, members of Congress and state legislators from all across America gathered for the purpose of calling this nation back to prayer. I this evening am calling you back to prayer. Please vote for it.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Leonora Montseguer, and I didn't really prepare anything too big to speak about tonight, except that I'd like to encourage you to open with prayer. And as I was sitting here, the Lord poured on my heart to just share something with you. Yesterday, walking around my block, I passed a neighbor that I see occasionally, but we don't chat much, but say hello. Anyway, I saw her out, and she did not look well. She had been very sick for quite a while. And so we talked, and I don't know what religion she is of, what beliefs are hers, but I asked her if I can pray for her, and she said, "Sure." And I prayed for her, and she thanked me, and she smiled, and it made her feel good. And I just feel praying here, each one of you can get something, no matter what it is, from that prayer, because God loves us all. All of you and everyone sitting here can benefit from God's love through our prayers. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next, yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Trevor Nunez, and I live in Palm Coast. I've heard a lot of non-factual statements regarding the founding of our country and its foundation of religion and God. The first clause in the Bill of Rights states, "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion," and this separation of church and state was rooted in American fears of government involvement. The word "God" does not appear anywhere in the text of the United States Constitution. Thomas Jefferson...
All right, hold, okay. All right, I'm gonna say this once.
Clerk, please pause the time.
Everyone, please be respectful, especially with the subject matter that you are bringing to the podium tonight. These folks listen to your comments, please, with the same respect, listen to their comments. Please continue.
Thank you, sir. The word "God" does not appear anywhere in the text of the United States Constitution. Thomas Jefferson, in his 1802 letter to Danbury Baptist Association, declared that when the people adopted the Establishment Clause, they built a wall of separation between church and state. The Supreme Court has ruled in support of this in 1947, 1948, three times in 1961, 1962, 1963, 1968, 1973, 1982, et cetera, et cetera. The original pledge of allegiance, written in 1892 by Francis Bellamy, a Baptist minister and adopted by the U.S. government in 1942, did not include the phrase "under God." This was added in the Cold War to differentiate the United States from the official atheist Soviet Union. This addition does not support the original intent of the pledge of allegiance. "Under God" was added by an act of Congress to respond to anti-communist sentiment in 1954. The pledge of allegiance is an expression of national loyalty and pride, not an expression of religious conviction. Changing the moment of silence to a religious invocation could potentially violate religious freedom if perceived as promoting a specific religion or belief system over others. The First Amendment to the United States Constitution prohibits the establishment of a state religion and protects individual freedom to practice their religion without government interference or endorsement. A moment of silence is typically neutral and inclusive. A religious invocation could be seen as endorsing a particular religion or belief system. This could be problematic if individuals of different religions or no religion feel excluded or pressured to participate in a practice that conflicts with their beliefs. Therefore, any change from a moment of silence to a religious invocation should not be made to ensure that this does not violate the religious freedom of individuals or promote a specific religion or belief system over others. It is better to maintain a neutral moment of silence that allows individuals to reflect their own beliefs or values without imposing any particular belief system. Per the attorney's statement, any religion can do the invocation, not just your God, but Wiccans, Satanists, Muslims, Hindus, or any religion that does not accept Christ.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Dave Flynn from Palm Coast. I understand that this would be a rotating basis. That should stop any problematic, you know, several people who believe in Satan or whatever it is, from spending, you know, doing it more often than hopefully our Christian pastors here. I strongly approve of prayer before all meetings. I couldn't get through the day without God's help. Look at the state of our country, and you'll see what happens when you tell God to go take a hike. If it doesn't work out, you can always stop it. And the spirit of this revolution, this resolution, is to get God's assistance in helping you making your decisions. So I think that concludes, you know, your comments before about what you pray for during a moment of silence, because I don't agree with a moment of silence, because then you're praying for other people that you care about, and that's great, but it, but it's not the purpose of this resolution. And I think to involve local clergy would be great, and it could also cause a few more residents to get involved in our community and in what goes on here at your council meetings and stuff. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Yes, Vincent Laguri, this is foreign territory for me, but I did prepare something, and I have to ask the mayor and the council, who could possibly object to praying to a supreme being called God? In 1954, as the gentleman said, President Eisenhower encouraged Congress to add the words "under God" to the pledge of allegiance. "Our money contains, in God we trust," the words "in God we trust." God is mentioned in at least, at least once in each of the fifty state constitutions. The Declaration of Independence contains a theory of rights that depend upon a supreme being. So my question is to the mayor, should we remove God terminology, "God" terminology, from examples I have mentioned? What does that accomplish? Nothing, except further erosion of human values. The question I do have for you, Mayor, is this. If God, by whoever gives an invocation, if the term "God" is used generically, what's wrong with it? What is wrong with it? I see nothing wrong with it. And I would close in just saying to you, giving to you the words of Blaise Pascal, a French philosopher and mathematician, who said, "If a man or a woman doesn't believe in God and God doesn't exist, he has nothing to lose. But if a man or a woman doesn't believe in God and God does exist, they have everything to lose." Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. All right. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker, please.
Thank you for inviting us tonight. Mary Hampton from Palm Coast. For those of you who attend church, do you begin with praise and worship? Do you know why? It's a spiritual battle. In the 1980s, there was a book written by Frank Peretti, there were two books. The first book was Present Darkness. It's about spiritual battles. It's about darkness. I've been in Palm Coast for almost 20 years. It's very dark here spiritually. The second book is Piercing the Darkness. That's your job. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Hi, we're Joel and Kathy Davidson. We live here in Palm Coast, Florida. On January 2nd, we all watched a young gentleman collapse on a football field, Deemer Hamlin. That football field became a place of prayer. All the stands, all the newscasters, people prayed all across America. Why? Because prayer matters to everyone. And so, because God is with us wherever we are, praying wherever you are is always the right thing to do. Please add that back into your council meetings.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
And I'm Joel, and we've been here for 18 years. And yeah, Palm Coast is growing, and as it continues to grow, it'll probably double in size, I imagine, should the Lord Terry. I think it's really valuable for, as Palm Coast, that they recognize, they see symbols and signals that, for the most part, we are a God-fearing community. And I think the overflowing churches on Sunday morning attest to that, whether it's the Catholic Church or the Baptist Church, or even Jehovah Witnesses, or Mormons, or what have you. We all might have a little bit different, you know, variation in our mind of who God is, but Palm Coast really is a God-fearing community, and I think it's a great idea to start the Palm Coast meetings off with invocation like that. And even if there was an invocation and a moment of silence for someone that, you know, to have your own personal moment of prayer. But I think we agree with all the comments that have been made so far, and we just thank you, Father God, for your presence here in this meeting tonight as we're discussing these things, and pray for your blessings on everyone. We appreciate Palm Coast, and want to thank you all for what we try to play, for the wonderful things that we do have in Palm Coast right now. We just love this community and drive around and see things being done, and trees, palm trees being put up, and roads being fixed up, and we're always just really grateful we live here in Palm Coast. It's just wonderful, so, thank you all.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
My name is Ed Shaw, and I've lived here for 22 years. I want to commend each one of you guys for taking up your banner to run Palm Coast, including you too, mayor. The one thing I would like to say, and I hope you do vote for the prayer, is that if, just look on our monetary, it says "in God we trust." It doesn't say "in silence we trust." So I hope that you vote yes.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Hello. Renee Wakowski, Palm Coast. I stand here today to voice my support for prayer at the beginning of city council meetings. Our great country was founded on religious principles and values, but now it is all too apparent that we have sadly lost those values. That is because we have lost sight of God. In 1954, Congress added the words "under God" to our Pledge of Allegiance to distinguish us from all godless communist countries. Now, the liberal left-wing communist socialists are attempting to silence prayer. They are destroying our nation from all directions, and we cannot allow this to continue. This is the free state of Florida. This is Flagler County. This is Palm Coast, and communist socialism has no home here. I urge you all to stand up for God and country. Stand up and vote for prayer.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Jenny Arroyo. I've been here for about 22 years in Palm Coast. Our nation was founded on God. It's a judicial Christian nation. Israel chose, God chose Israel, and we chose God. After 9/11, Congress was on their knees praying. Even in our money, it says "in God we trust." We're not saying religion. If you're talking about Wiccans, that is not God. It says "in God we trust." Wiccans are not for God. So if you see that, look at the Grammy Awards. Look what happened there. We don't want that. This community doesn't want that. So I just ask you to vote yes for prayer, not for silence, because it's our voice. We have freedom of speech. It's our voice that comes forth. It's whether a rabbi is up here praying, or somebody from one of our churches. It doesn't matter. It's the same God. So, thank you. Please vote yes.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Frank Earhart. My wife was up here earlier. I have no prepared comments. My family came to America in 1503 because of religious persecution. And when George Washington became president, he went to his church, he prayed for four hours. And then they had these meetings in the rotunda, 100 days where they prayed, every day. So I'm here to say that I think you should have prayer. And as far as I'm concerned, there's nothing in the Constitution says there's a separation of church and state, because there isn't. And I will say one thing, and it may be derogatory, but it's not meant to be. Moment of silence tonight, I don't know how you guys pray, but you sure can get much out in less than 15 seconds. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
I think you should pass this resolution. Council may be concerned about the community's thoughts on adding prayer, but I've seen dozens of people come up and stand at this podium and beg, some cry, for you to approve or not approve something, and the appearance then of a deaf ear to them, and you did what you want. Please show dissenters of your motion the same deaf ear. All 50 states, as mentioned earlier, have the word "God" or divine in their constitution. Our Declaration of Independence has it. And interestingly, I'm going to read this, and I hope I can get through it quickly, and if I can't, I pass one out to each of you anyway. In October of 1982, Public Law 97-280 was passed. It was a joint resolution, and let me read it to you quickly. Whereas the Bible, the Word of God, has made a unique contribution in shaping the United States as a distinctive and blessed nation and people; whereas deeply held religious convictions springing from the holy scriptures led to the early settlement of our nation; whereas biblical teachings inspired concepts of civil government that are contained in our Declaration of Independence and the Constitution of the United States; whereas many of our great nation, national leaders, among them President Washington, Jackson, Lincoln, and Wilson, paid tribute to the surpassing influence of the Bible in our country's development, as in the words of President Jackson, that the Bible is the rock on which our republic rests; whereas the history of our nation clearly illustrates the value of voluntary applying the teachings of the scriptures in the lives of individual families and societies; whereas the nation now faces great challenges that will test the nation as it has never been tested before; whereas the renewing of our knowledge of the faith in God through holy scriptures can strengthen us as a nation and a people. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Senate and House of the Representatives of the United States of America in Congress assembled, that the president is hereby authorized and requested to designate 1983 as the National Year of the Bible in recognition of both the formative influence the Bible has been for our nation and our nation's need to study and apply the teachings of the holy scriptures. I also would like you to look at 2 Corinthians 5:20, where it says we should all be ambassadors for Christ. Tonight, stand up and be ambassadors.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, next speaker, please.
My name is Kelly Dorries. I am a citizen of Palm Coast. I stand in full agreement with what this man just spoke forward as a direct descendant of President Andrew Jackson. Our church is founded upon the rock of Jesus Christ. Our leaders founded this church under God. We pledged this night under God. You pledged this night under God. You were voted in as leaders of this community. We trust you as leaders of our community to bring forth truth, justice, fairness, to bring forth our God into our community. We trust you with a vote to bring forth God into our meetings, for the precedence that you set goes forth into the other governmental buildings and meetings of this town. And it does have repercussion. So in this night, I say vote yes. Vote yes for the city of Palm Coast. Vote yes for our school board, to set a precedent for our school board, for our children to see and know and hear who God is. Do not think our God is not big enough to handle a Satanist. Do not think he cannot handle a Hindu. He cannot be boxed in, nor will he be boxed in. Vote yes tonight.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
My name is Carol Shaw, and I agree with everything she said. God bless you. I hope you will choose to call on God to speak to you and to us about our country and our lives. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Our county, too.
Okay. Yes, sir.
James, I can't read my notes. I write scribbled stuff real quick, so I agree with a lot of the things people said. Here's just an idea, you know? No one's being forced to pray, right? People stand for the National Anthem, some people don't sing. You stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, some people don't pledge. So if you're having a moment of prayer, you don't want to pray, you don't agree, then don't do it. But this country was built on God, on one true God, living God. Jerry Vernon McGee, who's a noted pastor, said, "Our country is godless because our congressmen, politicians," not you guys, politicians in Washington and such, they're godless. They just rejected God through everything, and that's why we are the way we are. So, you know, silence is a compromise, but don't be afraid of offending people because they don't believe in God. They don't want to pray? Don't let them, but having a moment of prayer is a great thing. I sit over there, I come in, pray that you'll make good decisions, pray that I say the right things and don't sound stupid, even though I do. But don't let any opposition sway you from backing off of this. Prayer is a good thing, and we should not be afraid to do it, and we should not be ashamed of God, because we stand before Him, and He's going to be held to pay.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
I'm Rabbi Merrill Shapiro, a 17-year proudly resident of, a citizen, taxpayer, voter here in Palm Coast. I, too, want to stress the importance of prayer, how essential and meaningful and efficacious it is. I urge you to pray. In fact, I again urge you to spend the 30 minutes prior to each meeting in the back room on your knees communing with God as you see it. I urge you as well, and you'll not often hear a rabbi tell you, but I urge you to hear the words of Jesus of Nazareth. Hear the words of Jesus of Nazareth, who in chapter 6 of Matthew, verse 6, just a few verses before the Lord's Prayer that we heard earlier, says, "When you pray, go into your room, close the door, and pray to your Father who is unseen; then your Father, who sees what is done in secret, will reward you." That is, go to a private place and offer those prayers. As you look and check on that, you can also look, of course, in John, chapter 8, where Jesus calls the Jews murderers and satanic liars. That will express how divisive an out-loud prayer prior to these meetings will actually be. It is true, it is legal, although I would question some of the revisions, since those revisions disenfranchise Palm Coast Quakers who have no religious leaders. It disenfranchises Palm Coast Muslims who don't pray at a congregation in this county, but rather pray at the mosque in Daytona. It disenfranchises all sorts of people and is, in fact, divisive. We look to you to bring us together, to work together, not to divide us, but in fact, to bring us together, to join you in making Palm Coast a better place for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Jayden Chavez, Palm Coast. I want to say one thing. We use prayer when we have natural disasters. We use prayer when we have issues. We use prayer when we're in war. We use prayer. People don't understand that prayer is very important, and people take it for granted. We all should have the right to pray. We have rights in this country, and apparently, it looks like we don't get to use them. This country was born for prayer. We all have the right to pray. It's sad that I have to stand here today, look at all of you, and say, "We have the right to pray. We have the right to be here, and we have the right to pray for the citizens of Palm Coast. We have the right to pray for America. We have the right to pray for the people that defend this country each and every day. We have the right to pray for the people that defend the sheriffs, fire department, and EMTs, first responders, anybody that helps Flagler County. We have the right to pray for them." And I think we should make that publicly known. I thank you. Thank you so much, and I hope you take my comment, and I hope you actually think about it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
My name is Brian Burke. I just want to express my support for prayer before the meeting. I'm not sure I know the language of the new amendments that you made, but this one lady, Kelly, says that we're all right with other religions coming here, so it doesn't matter what faith we are. We want to support the idea that there's one nation under God, and we will pray before meetings. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening. My name is Carol Gunthorpe, and I've been a resident of Palm Coast for 21 years. I'd first like to thank the attorney for making clear what the law says. We are a country that was founded on religious freedom. We value religious freedom, and I think we've sort of lost focus here. By saying that prayer is important, I think we all agree on that. However, there are places for that, and that's why there is separation of church and state. We are not denying anybody the ability to pray in the comfort of their home, in their houses of worship, in their car if they so desire. But on the other hand, if in fact you believe in separation of church and state, this is the wrong venue. You are duly elected officials. You represent a wide, diverse population. Not everybody believes in God, so you've disenfranchised them if in fact you start having prayer here. There are religions that I am sure may not be of everybody's thinking, but we do value the ability, in this country where we value freedom of religion, the ability to pray as we want. This is the wrong place. It's the wrong time to have religion inserted, and I urge you to think about that. Think about all your constituents and vote no on prayer.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, next speaker, please.
My name is Beatriz Enriquez. I live in this, in the city I'm very proud of, and I don't speak very well English, because my first language is Portuguese, but I need to say something. We need, I am in favor of prayers. The last shooting was the hatred of Christians, and the media don't admit that. We are under attack in this country. So I pray to God that you approve the prayers, because if you deny God, He's gonna deny us. We are not looking for Him. He's not gonna look for us. He's not gonna force nobody, but you need to reach Him. In prayers is the best to reach God. Thank you for consideration.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any remaining members of the... Are there any remaining members of the public that would like to address City Council at this time?
My name is Charles Hanger, Palm Coast, and I would ask each member of the council to think, can you remember where you were when John F. Kennedy was shot and what you were doing? Can you remember where you were when Martin Luther King was shot and what you were doing? Can you remember when Robert F. Kennedy was shot and what you were doing? I can remember exactly where I was when prayer was removed from our school. Can you? I had a very good friend who's no longer on, he's no longer with us on this side of the grass. His name is Bob Collier. We were in junior high school together, and I remember one thing he said to me, and it has stuck with me, and stuck with me, and stuck with me. We were walking down the hall, and he said, "Hey, guys, let's go sneak into the bathroom. We can get a couple of Hail Marys in before we go to class." Didn't have to say the Our Father in class, we figured it out, okay? For fifteen, twenty seconds, right here, I had the opportunity of being alone with my Lord and Savior. Thank you for that time given to me, so I could pray for my soul and your success. I don't envy your choice. I would be happy if we said the Lord's Prayer here before every meeting. I'm not going to make a recommendation. I'm giving us all food for thought. How many people in this room take at least a half hour for private prayer? None in the church, not where people can see you, put at home in your private. Just like the rabbi said, I encourage you to do that. If you want to pray to God for the success of this council, come five minutes early, gather outside for a Hail Mary. I will join you for an Our Father. I will join you. Let's make an appointment, but if you don't want to do that, how serious are you about right here, right then, for those few seconds? And if you choose to do that, I'll be a happy man. I'll say the Our Father, because I sit over here silently, and it meant the same to me, whether I say it out loud or in silence. But I would ask every member of our community to pay attention to our mayor and our council, who has said, "We're giving you this time, please do it silently, okay? You're here in a meeting, and they've asked you to do that." God will hear, God will hear every moment of your prayer, whether you do it out loud or in silence. This is not the venue for religious challenges. This is a venue to run our city and to ask God for His guidance, and I ask everybody to pray for that, and think about it a little bit. And again, I'm not making a recommendation. I'm happy either way.
Thank you for your comment.
George Summers, I've been a member of Palm Coast for eighteen years, and I'm, you heard my wife and a lot of pro why, why we believe in prayer, so I'm hoping that you would vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any remaining members of the public that would like to make comment to City Council on this agenda item at this time? Yes, ma'am.
Hello again, Charlene Werner. I'd like to talk about this idea of separation of church and state, this phrase, "A wall of separation in church and state." It was not, it's not, it's not in the Constitution, it is not an amendment, it is not a law. It was in a singular letter written by Thomas Jefferson to the Danbury Baptists in Connecticut. And it was, they had written him and said that they were concerned about the First Amendment. They were concerned that by codifying the freedom of religion in the Constitution, someday someone will say, "Congress gave us, Congress gave us this freedom of religion, and Congress can take it away." Jefferson replied, "Don't worry, there is a wall of separation of church and state." He said, "Congress will not infringe upon your freedom of religion." In a hundred and fifty years, his letter has been used, was, in the beginning, in the first a hundred and fifty years, his letter was only used seven times to protect the freedom of religion. In nineteen forty-seven, I know the Establishment Clause was talked about, there was a court case in nineteen forty-seven, the Everson Case. Justice Hugo Black, who was also a KKK member, he decided to twist the whole thing around. He takes Jefferson's eight words, lifts them from the letter, and applies them to the Establishment Clause instead of the Free Exercise Clause. These eight words have since then become a tool to take away religious rights, because up until nineteen forty-seven, it had only been referred to seven times. Now, since nineteen forty-seven until now, Jefferson's words have been quoted over three thousand five hundred times by the federal courts. These words of Jefferson are used more than the actual First Amendment. What's, the amendment has been used about three thousand times. So Thomas Jefferson had nothing to do with the Constitution. He was actually in France at the time. He did not, he did not write the Constitution, so this is completely false, and it is unfortunate that so many people think that this is in our Constitution. And so many laws and so many regulations are passed on this, and it isn't even true. We were founded on Judeo-Christian values. Our founders were not just deists. There's plenty of proof to show this. You can look to original documents. The Bible is the most cited source for the Constitution, more than any other source. Christianity is in America's DNA. It was tantamount to our founding. Our founding is not Buddhist, they were not Muslim, they were Christian. You may absolutely hate that, but that doesn't mean that you get to change our history. Obviously, the founders couldn't see the future or what, what state America would someday be in. So, yeah, I just, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Ally Rose, and I've been here a year and a half, and I came because God told me to come to Palm Coast. So I'm looking forward to seeing God rule and reign in this city, and I'm asking you all to vote yes on your proposal.
Thank you for your comment. I'll ask, are there any other members of the public that would like to address City Council at this time? Seeing no one approach the podium, I will close this section of public comment. I will come back to the dais, and I will ask City Council, comments, questions?
First, I want to thank everyone who came out here tonight in support of prayer. We're not reinventing the wheel here. This is done every day in Congress and Tallahassee, at council and school board meetings across this nation. The Supreme Court has already ruled this is legal, and our council did a great job, along with the assistance of Councilwoman Ponteiri, in tightening the language up to keep us out of any court situation. As we've repeatedly heard tonight, our pledge says, "We are one nation under God." Look at your money, printed on the back, "In God we trust." And by the way, if there's anyone out there that's offended by that, please, take those offensive bills out of your wallet, bring them up here, dump them on the dais, because our city could use the money, right? Could use the extra cash. Despite what the left-wing liberals say, we are a nation that was founded on religious beliefs and principles, and don't let them tell you anything else. Our Declaration of Independence clearly states that we are endowed by our Creator with certain unalienable rights. That Creator is God. Separation of church and state was never intended to keep religion out of government. It was meant to keep government from interfering in our religion. Now, those on council, and I don't know if there are any, but anyone on council who might be afraid we might offend someone, first, every time we vote on something, we offend someone. We can't make everyone happy. Second, no one who attends our meetings will be forced to stand or pray. They don't have to listen. They're free to simply leave the room if they don't want to hear it, or they can stick their fingers in the air, ears for all I care. Really doesn't matter. For those on the dais that may worry that you or the public might be offended with a prayer from one of our religious leaders in the community that maybe we don't fully agree with, well, I have no doubt that you'll all get over it. You'll grow a thicker skin. That's what leaders do. By the way, speaking of leaders, I was contacted by the speaker, our Speaker of the House, Paul Renner, and he wanted me to let each and every one of you know that he fully supports prayer before council meetings. Finally, what this really comes down to is a simple thing. Either you have the strength and the courage to stand with your religious convictions, or you surrender and allow the liberal socialist woke indoctrination to continue to destroy America, while we sadly retreat from the values that have defined us as a nation, a nation under God. I, for one, will never retreat. Now, I know, I'm sure there are folks across this state, across possibly this country, that are watching what we do here tonight. I sure pray that we do the right thing. I know one thing for certain, and no disrespect to you, Mayor, for your moment of silence and why you do it. I fully understand, fully understand, respect that that's, that's you. I get it. But if this council was on an airplane, and we were plunging into the ground and about the crash, I guarantee you there would be no moment of silence. We would all be praying like there's no tomorrow, asking for God's forgiveness. Thank you. That's all I have.
So I will echo Vice Mayor's comments with regards to thanking our citizens for the respectful discourse. This is a very personal and difficult conversation, and it's been something that I have, no pun intended, prayed about very hard. I also want to, in advance, thank Vice Mayor Danko, but also my other colleagues, for also engaging in a respectful discourse regarding this. So a few months ago, I introduced a moment of silence so that myself, my colleagues, and our residents could all collectively take just a moment to be still. With all the chaos around us on a daily basis, electronic devices in our hands, social media, text messages, emails, et cetera, et cetera, the list goes on, I felt that a moment of stillness was necessary and a positive thing that everyone could enjoy. For myself, I do take the moment of silence to pray. I pray that God gives me strength, grace, respect, and integrity to speak up for what I genuinely think is right, specifically with regards to the decisions that I make for this city and for all citizens. I take that moment and thank God for putting me in the position to be able to positively affect many lives, and in that moment, I'm abiding by what, by what God has actually instructed me as a Christian to do, specifically through Matthew six, five, which is to pray to my Father unseen, because He sees not only what I do in public, but also behind closed doors, and in that way, He rewards me. In this way, I'm following the teachings of my faith without also imposing my religion or faith on others. I've been contacted by many of you, and I thank you for that. I've been contacted by several citizens who are both for and against the invocation, and those in favor of it have said that we need to bring God back into our government and our country. Personally, I completely agree, but how do we do that? I feel we do that by doing the job up here on the dais to constitutionally govern. We do that to govern for everybody. It's not my job when I'm here to preach. It's my job to prophesize through my actions and my words and my kindness and respect to others. That doesn't mean that my choice to have a moment of silence over prayer is excluding God. The way that I keep God in our government is to abide by the golden rule, is to treat others the way that I would like to be treated. It's the way that I speak to others, the way that I show respect to others, and the way that I treat others, especially those that I disagree with. My faith shines through me and the integrity with which I make decisions. It exemplifies in me abiding by what is in public or behind closed doors. In the scripture, my faith says I'll be rewarded accordingly. I want to say this, with many things out there that divide us, race, gender, nationality, sexuality, political party affiliation, I don't want religion to be another thing added to that list. The moment of silence is something that we can all partake in, that we can all enjoy, and that we can all pray during. Nobody is saying that you can't take that moment to pray, and I know for several of my council members, that's exactly what we do. And our actions towards you all as residents should exemplify that, our respect for each other and how we engage in discourse. I personally would much rather spend our taxpayer dollars on deputies fixing our roads and improving our parks than on worrying about constitutionally administering a policy that could inadvertently land us in an expensive lawsuit. As an attorney, I know that our council has done a great job drafting the policy, but I know for certain that the moment of silence is constitutionally sound, legally defensible, inclusive, and does not force me or anyone else to betray their faith. In response to some of the public comments specifically tonight, I agree that we are in a battle against, between good and evil, but that's not the bigger problem. In my mind, the bigger problem is that we are in a battle of doing what we, doing what we say we're going to do, not in public, not when there's meeting minutes, not when there's a public record to record it all, but behind closed doors, when no one else is looking. That is what we are truly battling. So we have to find it within ourselves to govern the right way and to not let our words and our grandstanding be the main focal point, but how we treat and how we govern. I respect the First Amendment and feel it's arguably our most important amendment that must be upheld, especially in the times that we are currently living. That is true governance for all. That's a true ambassador of Christ and a true leader. In Tallahassee, they actually just passed a law that makes all public schools engage in a moment of silence during first period, every single day. I respect our representative, Paul Renner, obviously very much so, but if in Tallahassee, where we know they're taking a large stand as conservatives, and they chose to go with the moment of silence, I think that we should follow that guidance and also engage in a moment of silence. For these reasons, my vote is against the invocation and to keep the moment of silence.
Thank you, councilperson. Councilperson Hyder.
Yes, first, I'd like to thank everyone for their comments, and thank all of my fellow council members and Mr. Mayor for your comments also. I'd like you all to know that I believe in prayer. I'm a very strong believer in prayer. I grew up in a very large family. Prayer was the foundation and basis of keeping the family together and keeping us mindful of each other's love and beliefs in one another. However, I grew up in a family that consisted of many different religions. There were Muslims, there were Jehovah's Witnesses, there were Catholics, there were atheists. Of every denomination, there were religions. We all had to learn to love and respect their religion as to did we respect them as individuals and human beings. We should also learn to do that here. I believe that prayer is essential, and it is sacred. However, I believe that a moment of silence is deserving and to each of us individually as we pray to the God that we believe in. In my home, we prayed collectively, and we also prayed alone. When we needed that time and that moment of silence between ourselves and God, the Father, the Son, and the Holy Ghost, we may have gone into the closet to have that prayer, but we had that time with God ourselves. I do believe in a moment of silence. However, based on the decisions that will be made and made present by our council, we need to follow those guidelines also. And as residents and citizens of here in Palm Coast, we need to stick together and, yes, continue our prayers. Please bring prayer back into the school, but yes, prayer is indeed needed.
Thank you, councilperson. Councilman McLoughis.
I'm very proud of our previous councilwomen who both put into words so eloquently in that exact description of the way that I feel as well. There's different situations, and I, there's a lot of things that I wrote down here that were in response to a lot of the public. There's, there's a lot of energy here, and I don't think, and I think that we can actually understand that with the amount of energy in this room. Imagine the counterpoint energy coming into this room at the same way. The amount of groans and owns are going to be the exact opposite and much more powerful. So when you have conflict like that, the only thing it's going to do is open up a vector of lawsuits and all sorts of things that we can't actually predict right now. You may grow now, but this is, this is a predicament that we're in, and I think that we are prudently preparing our government to be able to be sustainable for our future councils. I don't, there's been no issues in the six years that I've been here. I don't, there's been no issues in the six years that I've been here where anyone has ever come before council and the three minutes that anyone is allowed to give. You could come here and give an invocation yourself every single Tuesday for three minutes instead of the one allowable minute with this invocation policy. Every single Tuesday, you can come here and give that three minutes invocation, and I would implore you to. Trust me, I am not against religion in the slightest. I've even spoken to local religious leaders who I, I'm friends with them. I oftentimes, it may seem silly, but I golf with a lot of local religious leaders, and I've spoken to at least three or four from different religions that they say, Nick, this is only going to open up a whole can of worms that we can't accurately predict, you know, today. You can't put it back in the bag. See? The groans are applicable to my statements. The other thing that I wanted to correct, Bibles aren't banned in school. You're allowed to have a Bible in school. You're not allowed to preach from it for sure, or have a teacher, you know, preach to you about a Bible, but you can have a Bible in school and reading hall, you can have any type of book of religion to read in a school. There's nothing against that. Also, you know, we talked about the words on our, e pluribus unum, that was the original, you know, motto. Of course, I didn't live through McCarthyism and the Red Scare, and I, you know, I'm only here talking about what I've learned through historical sources. This gentleman asked where I was with Martin Luther King Jr. or JFK. I wasn't here. I was a twinkle in my father's eyes yet. And here we are today, you know, talking about the implications of these things that we did sixty years, seventy years ago of implementing a God we trust on certain, you know, pieces of government-issued currency even. But I believe that we have a responsibility as councilmen and councilwomen to insulate our city from potential waste of taxpayer money, and I'm telling you, and I know this isn't a popular notion with our audience here, but this is going to open up a bag of worms if it were to be passed. And again, I welcome anyone who wants to come for three minutes before our city meetings and you're able to give a prayer, not an invocation. You're able to give a prayer, not an invocation, those three minutes. I welcome you to do that. Not once in the last six and a half years I've been here has anyone done that.
Counselor, that concludes your comments. Anything else?
No, that does complete the.
You're sure?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Vice Mayor, any final comments?
Again, I think a moment of silence, and I respect your opinion on it, but it's a moment to silence us all. I remember prayer when I was in school. I remember when they took it away. Look at our school systems. Look at them. Look at the shambles they're in. Look at our government. Look what's happening in Manhattan. You've got a prosecutor going after a former president, and he's weaponized our judicial system. This is insane. Budweiser is putting transsexuals on cans of beer. Do I need to say more? If we don't need prayer now, I mean, I don't know when we're going to need it, because we do need it, we definitely need it. And so I'm going to be voting in favor of this. And if my fellow councilmen vote against it, I'd rather lose with you folks than with these folks.
Counselperson Pontieri. All right, please. Any final comment?
The only final comment that I will say is I do want to state that voting in this way does not put one person in one bucket or the other. Just because you are voting for a moment of silence so that you can pray between you and God does not mean that you are a woke leftist who is on board with all of the other crazy things that are going on in the left.
Excuse me.
And I say that out of respect for our residents who are also in favor of keeping the moment of silence. I do not feel that this needs to be something that completely divides people on every other issue under the sun, and this is exactly my fear, is that this will not bring us together but will further divide. And I think, it is my opinion, it is my opinion that that is the last thing that our country needs.
Thank you, Councilperson. With that, I think that finishes City Council comments, and I just, I will personally thank every member of the public that attended this evening, whether they are still here or not. I have listened and I appreciate every one of your comments, and I think that together we all represent a community, and we will always have a variety of viewpoints, and I appreciate the decorum that you have shown this evening. It does prove that as a city and as a community, we can talk about sensitive and difficult issues, we can come together, and plus, there will be many more difficult issues in the future. I know there will be. So with that, and there is no more public comment this evening, I've closed this, so thank you, I will call for the vote.
Mayor, we need a motion.
I know, I was actually calling for a motion. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
So please state the motion for me.
The motion to approve an invocation at the beginning of every council meeting, as defined by our council.
Clarify, the motion to approve the resolution for the city council's invocation policy.
Okay, I have a motion by Vice Mayor Danko. Is there a second?
Another moment of silence.
Hearing, excuse me, hearing no second, the motion fails. We now move on to the rest of the agenda.
Mayor, I would like to make a follow-up motion.
Eighty percent of the people didn't want their votes. Eighty percent, you just, we didn't listen to them. We all voted. We all voted yes. We all voted yes. You're all cowards. You're cowards.
Please exit quietly. Thank you.
Our motion failed. All these people, it's a free people.
Coward.
I would like to represent us.
The only thing that you represent us.
Keep it on the line.
Counselor, if you would read in item number ten, please.
Mayor, just very quickly before we do move on, that's okay, that's okay, I understand the circumstances. I would like to, I did appreciate one of the comments regarding the moment of silence, the length of it. I don't want us to be on a clock per se every time we do the moment of silence, but perhaps we make it to where it's at least thirty seconds to allow people to, if they do want to engage in a meaningful prayer at that time, to give them more time. So I would make a motion at this time to make sure that our moment of silence that we are now sticking with is at least thirty seconds.
Is there a second?
I was thinking maybe we shall allow, if I heard you correctly, a moment of silent prayer. I know that's what we did when I was in school. We had a.
That's the length of time.
Yeah, I would just like to make sure that it's thirty, at least thirty seconds.
Whatever the time was.
My understanding is Councilmember Carly Pontieri is looking to establish a minimum amount of time for the moment of silence. We don't have that now.
Can I make it simple? If we have a consensus that a moment means a minute?
That would be great.
I agree with that, so you don't have a consensus.
Okay, so I need a motion.
Then I'll make a motion that the moment of silence be a minute. I mean, that's what makes sense to me.
Do I have a second?
Don't you have consensus? Even if it's four to one, is consensus correct?
Well, let's vote on it.
I can tell you when I'm holding the gavel, it won't be a minute.
Okay.
It'll still be majority.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
I have a second. Is there any further discussion? Are there any members of the public that would like to discuss the moment of silence
Again, Charles Hager, I want to thank you again. This has been a difficult night, and I appreciate your decorum. Mr. Clufus made a suggestion, and I thought it was a good one. He said, anybody, if you want to say a prayer, you got three minutes. But this evening, I noticed that you changed the agenda just a little bit to let public comment come first. And if you really like what he said, maybe we ought to institute that public comment before anything else to allow somebody to open it with their own prayer, just a thought. Whether you do it or not, that's up to you. And I was, just another thought that went through my mind, and I thought, I think that might be a healing thing, because that'll happen for a while and it'll probably go away. If it doesn't go away, that's probably a better thing.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address City Council at this time, saying none, I'm back to the dais, any final comments? Then would you do a roll call vote for me, please?
Vice Mayor Danko?
No.
Councilmember Hyder?
Yes.
Councilmember Clufus?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontieri?
Yes.
Mayor Otten?
Yes.
Motion passes four to one.
Now, Counselor, if you would read in item number ten on the agenda, please.
Yes, item number ten is a resolution concerning the W-1 Beltar Pathway Bridge Rehabilitation, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida approving additional funding for expenses related to the W-1 Beltar Pathway Bridge Rehabilitation Project, authorizing the city manager or designee to execute the necessary documents, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for implementing actions, and providing for an effective date.
You have a presentation for us?
So I'm Carmelo Morales, stormwater engineer, City Palm Coast. I've come before, talked about this project in the past. I'll provide a quick summary. I think you're all fairly aware with it, but for the listeners and the public. The W-1 at Beltar, it's a stormwater improvement project. It mainly involves pipelining some large seventy-four inch, eighty-four inch crossings. The project began last August. Since the project had begun, it's encountered several setbacks, mainly delays, which have caused additional expenses. For the most part, the delays are caused by the two hurricanes we had last year, Ian and Nicole. We've had some subcontractors who've fallen behind on getting their work done, which has delayed the project significantly. We've had a failing head wall that is in need of repairs and a new one installed in its place. In this case, we're going to end up just installing it along with it to provide additional support. There was additional stabilization needed because there was erosion happening at the control structure just upstream of this. Again, this is just weeks following the second hurricane we had last year, and as well as some sidewalk diversion. I want to say, last time I came here, I was fairly confident I was not going to have to come back and talk about this project, but here I am. And it's not additional scope in this scenario, it's more of a clarification. The last number that I provided at the presentation about a month ago was off, and this is, really consolidates it, and just make that final correction. I also want to point out that, you know, this project endured its, you know, the due diligence I would give to all our stormwater capital projects, right? We did design, we did research, we had a survey done. It's unfortunately encountered a lot of setbacks with regard to, you know, natural events and also unforeseen conditions, right? So, I mean, with that said, I'll take questions if you guys have any.
Any council questions?
No, I have no questions.
I don't envy you right now. I remember having this conversation.
That's why I don't have any questions.
I remember very clearly being very unhappy that we were back here asking for more money, and so I'm sure you can anticipate my position at this point. My question is, you're requesting an additional contingency, which I find to be somewhat odd as far as the semantics go. So why is it an extra contingency of a hundred thousand? Are we just needing some extra cushion? Is this money dedicated for something? Have we blown through the other contingency? What exactly is this?
We already went through the previous contingency that was live for this project. I don't know if it's a play on words, we're going to need it. It's not whether we may need a hundred thousand or not, we're going to need it to complete the latest proposals we see from the contractors, which are the same as last time. Nothing has changed as far as the proposal, what we submitted last time is identical. It's just more of a correction, right? We have gone through so many negotiations with them, and the cost has gone down from what they were proposing, but maybe contingency is not the right word, or it's a play on words, we're going to use it. This would probably give us like maybe four thousand dollars extra, because it was like ninety-six thousand in change, so I rounded it up.
So what is the, this says it was inadvertently not processed at the time. What do you mean by that?
Yeah, so when they came in with change order number three, it was regarding the pipe lining, right? So we were changing from the slip lining to the spin cast, two different methods of lining the pipe. The slip lining involves inserting, adhering it to the existing pipe, where the spin casting, it's literally that, you're spinning mortar and dragging machine, and so you're kind of constructing a new pipe inside of it, no plastic involved. Because of the deformity that the pipe had, it was oval shaped, almost completely oval, the slip lining was not going to work, right? So these pipes are always surcharged, they're always full of water, and it was an unforeseen condition. So we had to change. We provided alternate during the bid process, alternate pricing for slip lining versus spin casting. So we changed to the previously bid amount for the spin cast technology. So that involved two steps. It involved that, and there was additional routing that needed to be done to, because it was, again, there was so much water falling through the pipe when we de-water it, it was really a dangerous condition to have contractors working out there without providing some sort of route to stabilize that and slow down that, because as the water comes through, so does sedimentation, right? So what we're doing is weakening the road above, and it could really be a catastrophe if we don't, you know, address it at the moment. So that's a long answer to your question, but what I'm getting at is I approved half of that, what we had in the original contingency, just to keep it moving forward and expedite that work to be done, with the mindset that I would come back and readdress it, and I don't want to say that it slipped my mind, but it just kind of came last minute, that second part of that change order, number three, had to come in later. And that's actually the key figure that is prompting this presentation today.
How much more of this project do we have? How much more of this project do we have to, I mean?
To complete it? What percentage do we have? We're probably fifty, sixty percent. Yep. I just met with them this morning, you know. We're starting the work on the head wall on the downstream side next week. The pipe guys are going to replace the pipes that we'd lost, and I don't know if you guys have gone by that, we now lost a good portion of the sidewalk too on the west side. So we're going to have to get a lot of new construction done, and that's going to be happening within the next weeks. It'll be done summertime.
So have we budgeted, I mean, do we have in the budget these monies in case there's more cost increases? Because with only fifty percent of the projects done, my fear is that this will continue to be an issue.
Well, what we projected so far with the change orders, I'll cover it, is we're not expected to come back. The change orders are for that, to cover the rest of the project going through. Also, keeping in mind, once these failures occur, right, there's, you don't just turn to the contract and say, hey, we need to get this fixed. There are some items that need engineering design, right? So that takes time. I don't know how often you guys deal with engineers, and I'm one, we're not exactly the fastest people in, you know, in getting that scheduled out, they have clients. So there are significant portions of delays because we're frankly waiting on the design to get done. And then we get the design back, and I look at it, and I say, wait, listen, we need to get this a little bit smaller, it's too expensive. And so there's a lot of delays caused by that too. So it's, you know, it's a snowball effect, right? Once it starts going downhill, it picks up speed fast.
Yeah, the only other question that I had was this, on page fifty-two of our packet at the bottom, it says, "The project amount, the projected amount to spend for fiscal year twenty-three has left a deficit that will be handled through fiscal year twenty-four projections utilizing savings and contingency from other projects." That, I'm very concerned about that. What other projects are we drawing from in order to compensate here?
For the most part, what we're drawing is the original funding source for this was the FY twenty-three loan, I think is what it was called, or it may have been FY twenty-two loan. And that was going to be for four projects, right? So essentially what we did, and I think I spoke about this on the last time, we prioritized what those four projects were, and the previous one, L4, which is also funded by that, came in over budget, and we had to take some money from another project that was in the lower, you know, priority list. you know, priority list. And this one is the same way. We have to get these things completed, and essentially we leave the other projects shelf-ready, looking for more funding, right? So it's turning into from four projects to two projects, just to make these work out.
Let me ask you, if we don't approve this, what happens? What happens to the project?
That's a good question. We need to get it done, I'm hoping you...
I agree. So I'm asking, where would it come from? Where could we take it from? Because you, I mean, and I don't mean you personally, but we continue to be asked, and we can't budget this way. So if we don't approve this, and I'm not saying we will or we won't, but where does the money come from if this is a necessity?
That might be a Carl Cody question.
Okay.
And part of those projections, when we do our annual budgets, we project how much we're going to spend in that, you know, through the rest of the year, you know. So a few months before the end of the year, we're saying, okay, we're going to spend this much on that project. Due to some of the delays, we underspent last year on this project. So some of that loan money, we didn't rebudget for this year because we thought we were going to spend it last year. So that loan money is there in some of those projections, but this additional cost, yes. We were able to cover, this additional cost is going to be covered from the remaining balance we have in the loan. So we did shift some to L4, we shifted some to this project already, and there's still a little bit of loan money left, and this is really some of the remaining balance of that loan dollars. Now, if we didn't have those loan dollars, we have a few items in our budget for contingency type projects, for capacity improvements, for pipe rehabilitation, and various projects, you know, that come up, because these emergency situations, either a standalone project or some of these unforeseen conditions where you, you know, you know, we anticipate average number of voids around pipe, and we're, you know, we're projecting what, how much of that pumping is going to be needed, but on this particular project, it was just excessive, way beyond what we could have anticipated, what was typically planned for a project like this. But we do have a few buckets in our budget to cover costs like this. So obviously, if they're not used, they just get carried over to the next year.
So these other buckets, you're saying that if they're not used, they're carried, they'll be carried over to fiscal year 2024?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Morales, I don't mean to beat up on you, but it's a concern. Thank you.
Councillor, first, I mean, the only comment I can make, I guess this would be more to city manager, is that one of the things that I certainly didn't talk about in my SAP process was, as we've reached that 50-year mark in terms of expecting more and more accelerating failure of this type of infrastructure, there has to be two things. There has to be a learning curve so that we can continue to improve our forecasting if we know stuff is going to fail. And I know it's been tough with supply chain and everything else, but we definitely have to get better at it. And then number two, I think we're going to have to work in a metric to monitor it. So, you know, contingency, I agree, you know. That contingency is coming out of the taxpayer's pocket, and it's, I understand that you roll it forward, but it still came out of a taxpayer's pocket. So I guess it's just another, how can we learn from it to improve and raise our bar going forward? That's kind of the message. Anybody else?
I just ask, historically, have you ever seen price increases at such a rapid pace in your professional experience?
I have not, no.
Carl? No. And I just want to put that out there, as it's hard to predict when you have no past performance of these things to be indicative of what could possibly happen. I don't think anybody today would have been able to project what had occurred over this past 12 months, 12 months ago. So I'm with you, I think we need better oversights and more, you know, insight into how these things are going. But again, we have to also respect like the anomalies that have occurred over the last 12 months with costs of essentially everything. But I mean, it's very apparent with their project update slide that things have been like they have never been before, and here we are.
I just, I wanted to just one more thing. We had another pipelining job on the north side of town, and significantly larger, right? We talk about three quarters of a mile that got lined, 60-inch pipe, and that one went on schedule and on budget. So this is more, this project, W-1, it may be more of an anomaly than the normal, right? We've had so many issues, particularly with the hurricanes, and which, by the way, I want to say that we are actively trying to get through FEMA to get some of that reimbursed, and it's going to be probably close to $300,000 that we could potentially get back, so we're not losing the entire farm.
Thank you.
So I just have one question, because I think Councilwoman Pontieri asked a good question, and maybe Carl, you can answer it. What happens if we don't approve this amount?
If you didn't approve this amount, the project would go unfinished, you know, we'd only be able to complete it to a point that's in the contractor's contract. And then the remaining work that is above and beyond what's in his contract, we would have to either self-perform or leave unfinished, and, you know...
Are we capable of self-performing it?
If this is a little bit more complex than what our field guys can handle.
It would be very minor. It wouldn't be enough to cover the $100,000, like sidewalk we could pour and whatnot, but we're only talking a few thousand dollars, it's not huge sections of work.
I think we do need, and again, it's not anyone's fault, I get the price increases, but you just can't keep coming back asking for money over and over and over again. I know we got some buckets, but those buckets are going to run dry. So I'm just asking that we really find a way to step up our game, and I don't know how to do that. You guys are the ones that are going to have to figure it out. But we're headed into a bad economy, it's going to get worse. We're going to learn to start tightening our belts around here. So I, please, please, I know you're trying to do the best you can, I get it, but I think we have to step it up a little, and I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this issue at this time? Yes, sir.
Let me go. Don't move that screen a minute, because I need that. Thank you. Robert McDonald, Palm Coast. All right, now, my first question is, obviously, we signed, the city signed a contract with this gentleman's company, that it was going to cost X amount of dollars to do the project. Well, if most people remember, this is now the second time that somebody has come in to work on the same bridge. The City of Palm Coast, they started this project, and we know where that went, that's why these guys are in. Now, there's five increases. They signed the contract, the city signed the contract, so there should be no increases. If it costs $1 million, it's $1 million, not $1 million plus. Now, my next comment is that the estimated completion date was March of '23. Well, this is now April of '23, and we're not even close to having this bridge completed. Now, if anybody goes up and down Beltair a lot, they notice that these guys are not working on this bridge every day. And it's not like we live up north and we get cold and snow and rain and all of that. We live in Florida. They should be working five days a week, but they're not. But nobody can explain that to me. Now, finally, they, they're $100,000 in the hole. I don't particularly sometimes agree with the vice mayor, but he hit the nail right on the head. If we keep going deeper and deeper, this project is going to cost us, God only knows what. And it shouldn't be the increase, all these other five increases, they shouldn't be on the backs of the residents of the city, it should be on their back. They're the contractor. They screwed up. I don't care that we had two hurricanes, that's not my issue. My issue is that they're not working every day. I'd like to have a job where I don't have to go to work every day and still get paid. Now you come back and you ask us for $100,000 or at least, and we have no idea when this project is going to be finished. So, Vice Mayor Danko, you hit the nail right on the head. I would make the company be held responsible for this, this extra money, not the residents of Palm Coast.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address this agenda item at this time? Seeing no one approach the podium, I'll close the public comment. Are there any final comments from city council at this time?
I just want to clarify for the record, that Mr. Morales actually works for the city, so he's just talking about the contract that we entered into as the city. So just for clarification, so you understand, I don't want him to, I don't want it to make it look like he's a contractor before us, he works for, he actually is our engineer, so just want to clarify that.
Any other comments? I would ask for a motion at this time.
I move for approval.
So I have a motion from Councilman Clufus to approve the resolution as presented. Is there a second? I'll pass the gavel.
I'll go ahead and make the second.
I have a second from Vice Mayor Danko. Is there any additional discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
I'm opposed.
Thank you. We move to item number 11 on the agenda. Councillor, if you would read that in for me, please.
Yes, this is a resolution concerning the Whiteview Parkway Safety Improvements, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida approving the terms and conditions of Florida Department of Transportation Local Agency Program Agreement for grant funding for the construction of Whiteview Parkway, authorizing the city manager or designate to execute the contracts, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for implementing actions, and providing for an effective date.
Mr. Cody, you have a presentation for us, summary?
Yes, I got a very brief presentation. Carl Cody, Director of Stormwater Engineering Department. We have before you today is a topic or a grant for the Whiteview Parkway Safety Improvement Project. Florida Department of Transportation, we had submitted this project as a, for grant funding, and we have received grant funding for the project. Just to give you a little summary, it's for the reconstruction resurfacing of the parkway, the entire length of the parkway. It will add safety improvements along the entire parkway, as well as improving traffic operations and resurfacing of the parkway, and adding pedestrian pathway from White Mill to US1. This is the entire segment, just over three and a half miles long. Much of the intersections were received, right turn lanes, left turn lanes, some of the medians will be improved. This is a project that has been ongoing for many years now, is, our Flagler County is on the TPO safety list as the most severe crash roadway within our county, so it scored very high on the TPO list, and that is why it got moved up to receive funding from the TPO. They do have limited funds available. They are providing funds in this grant here, you can see, at just under $1.6 million to help cover the cost of this project. So the resolution before you today is for, to move into an agreement with DOT for the grant of the project.
All right. I thank you for the good news for the grant. It's been in the hopper for some time, and we're finally getting our due. When would you actually be able to begin to utilize the funding?
It's in the current year's budget. Right now, the plans are with their construction group, they're not certain that they'll have their review and approval done before the end of their fiscal year, which begins July 1st, but it will be very shortly thereafter. Either June or July, we'll get the go-ahead to move forward and actually advertise for construction.
And this, this certainly aligns with some of our SAP initiative pillars in terms of safer roads and all that, through grant funding, which is the best kind. Okay.
So, we're not tearing up any pavement on Whiteview, right?
Not tearing up any pavement, correct.
We're keeping it...
We're keeping the two lanes where there's two, well, two lanes and four lanes where there's four lanes, we'll be adding right turn lanes and adding some left turn lanes as well along the road.
No, no, I'm done.
So I just had a few questions. First of all, love that we're getting a grant, obviously, I'm a big fan of those, so good job with that. I wanted to ask, and you may not know the answer to this now, but I am curious, as I understand that we are trying to, or we are entertaining the idea of kind of a mini fire station on Whiteview in, I think, Woodburn, are we, in doing this project, are we anticipating what we might need for ingress and egress there, so we're not essentially taking grant monies, building something that we later have to dig up and redo after that station's put in?
Yes, we have proposed a median cut, and we are looking to work with our consultant engineer on the fire station project to make sure that we have that aligned properly when we go to the construction phase. So right now, we just have one earmarked, and we took our best guess based on the property location, but we want to fine-tune that and make sure it's in the exact spot it needs to be.
Okay, perfect. I look forward to seeing that. And then the only other question I had is, because I know there is on the agenda tonight, a development also going on Whiteview, are we also making sure that the construction of this is not going to coincide with development for that, so that our residents are not here very upset, reasonably so, with us because we've got multiple construction projects going on in this already dangerous corridor?
Yeah, correct. This project will last about a year, and right now, it's not slated to have lane closures, the intent is to be able to perform the work by maintaining all the lanes open, obviously with the exception of when they're resurfacing the roadway, in particular where it's only a two-lane section. So there'll be some, either lane closures during that phase of work, but resurfacing is usually a fairly quick operation. Some of the medians will be closed, though, so coming out of some of the side streets that you won't be able to get through the median, so some of those residents will have to go in and do a U-turn or take a different route to get to where they need to go. The path will be closed at certain times along the way as they're doing some of those right turn lane improvements, but for as far as through traffic, there should be very minimal disruption.
Okay, thank you.
But to your point, so from our communications department, an excessive amount of PR and communication in advance to set everybody's expectations so that this wonderful grant doesn't get spoiled in terms of people being dissatisfied with the phase of construction, which you can't avoid, so that would be great, good. Any other comments? I would ask the public, any comments from the public on this item?
I was going to say, I've been part of this one for five years now. Good one to get going. This is literally going to save lives, like statistically with data and everything. This is the most dangerous road in our, you know, inventory, let's do it.
Any members of the public? Seeing no one come forward, I'll come back to the dais for any final comments. If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor Danko to approve. I have a second from Councilman Clufus. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Are there any opposed? Very good. Councillor, I would ask you to read in the next and final resolution this evening.
That is correct, Mayor. This resolution is for the Whiteview Multi-Family Apartments Master Site Plan, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, approving application number 5216 Whiteview Multi-Family Apartments Master Site Plan, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for implementing actions, and providing for an effective date. City council members, this is a quasi-judicial matter. Any ex parte communications you may have had on this item on the record?
I've had none.
None.
None of us have had any ex parte.
All right, thank you. I'm just going to, because I think this may be the first time you've had one of these come up for our newer council members, I'm just going to quickly note that for master site plan approvals, a criteria is set out in the Land Development Code, Section 2.10.04, and this is the following, this is the criteria that should be considered when you're reviewing this. The logic of the design, the internal consistency, the impact on neighboring sites, internal vehicular and pedestrian connectivity, consolidation of utilities and facilities, including stormwater parking, signage, et cetera, and the public benefit derived from the project. So with that, I'll pass it over to Mr. Hoover to give the presentation.
Good evening, everyone, on this long evening. Bill Hoover, I'm senior planner with Community Development. This shows where the project is located. Actually, it's right along Whiteview Parkway, and so back in 2018, city council approved a master plan development of 116 acres, and the multi-family portion is in the southeast corner. It's 18.84 acres, and you can see that the master plan development extends from Pine Lakes Parkway down to Whiteview Parkway, and its east boundary is along White Mill Parkway. The applicant has submitted a master The applicant has submitted a master site plan for 316 units, and since it's over 100 units, it's a Tier III master site plan, which requires review from staff, then the planning board with a recommendation to City Council for final determination. The, this is the future land use map. The master plan development area is shown in red, and that allows almost every zoning district in mixed use. Around that is yellow, which is residential, and some of these green strips are green belt, which are typically wetland-type areas. The other mixed use to the west, I can show you on the next slide, which is our zoning map. So the blue area, in royal blue, is the master plan development. Directly a ways to the west is MFR-2, which is the AV area, and City Council approved the master site plan a couple of years ago on that. They're still working on that process because they're having to extend utilities along US-1. To the south of the master plan development is, in light blue, is PSP, Public, Semi-Public, and there's actually a couple churches there, and I think directly to the west of that is that fire station site that was just mentioned previously. To the east of the master plan development, in the gray, and also to the southeast is DPX or Duplex Properties, and the rest of the properties in the gold and light brown colors are single-family residential II and III. When this master plan development came to City Council about four years ago, this site included, so they had the 205 single-family homes were already planned, and that's what KB Homes is developing at this time. That lake to the south of the single-family was an existing lake, and the peach-colored lands to the east, you can see at the northeast corner is a nine-acre future city park site that includes about 2.3 acres of wetlands, and the multifamily area is about 18.84 acres. Separating those two is a driveway, which will serve the single-family homes, the park site, and the multifamily site. So the density for this project includes the park site, so those units for the park site were transferred over for this multifamily. In this case, I've had to rotate the site plan so you could see them better. This is the master site plan we're reviewing this evening. Whiteview Parkway is on the left. White Mill Drive is on the bottom of the screen, and Wisteria Hill Drive is the parkway or driveway that will serve the single-family in the upper right-hand corner of the screen, the park site to the right-hand side where the text is, as well as the multifamily. So any residential project that has over 50 units is required to have a second access. So in this case, we've got a residence will have a exit onto Whiteview Parkway, and that's in the westbound lanes there. There's no median cut. However, this entrance for the project, this is a gated community, will also serve, so the Fire Department, EMS, and the Sheriff's Department will have a Knox Box access as you go into this project off of Whiteview Parkway. And there's some complications there as why that's not a full median opening. Okay, in this master site plan, I colored in some of the buildings so you can see the difference. The project has 316 homes. There's 10 three-story buildings. Those are shown in the dark gray. The ones in the dark brown are four, those are four buildings that are two stories high. They're carriage homes, and then you can see the, in turquoise, a couple stormwater areas.
By carriage, you mean townhomes, correct?
No, not in this, not in this case. They looks, oftentimes, townhomes are called carriage homes, but in this case, there's a garage beneath them that does not go with the unit itself. We can see that a little bit later in here.
Okay, I'm looking forward to seeing that.
There's a carriage, but it doesn't, you don't get to walk from the garage directly into the unit, and units above that.
Okay.
And then we have a pool in the royal blue. The clubhouse is directly east of that, and at the top of the screen in the green is the dog park. These are our site development requirements. They're basically meeting the area easily. Maximum height is 60 feet. They're at 45 feet 8 inches. The density calculations are there. They would be allowed a maximum of 327, which would be a density of 11.2 units per acre, because the wetland areas bring that down some from the 12. Their 316 units ends up being a density over the project of 10.9 units per acre. Okay, the minimum parking on this project, they submitted, we have a parking flexibility study that gets used fairly often from our standards that don't meet every situation exactly. They have submitted a parking flexibility study that the engineer of record has submitted. It shows that in apartment complex, and this company has done about four others that they've showed us in this study, and the parking required for this type of project would be about 1.5 units, I'm sorry, 1.5 spaces per unit. They're supplying about 10% over that at 1.66 spaces per unit. Additionally, we require parking for the clubhouse. Frequently, you got rental staff there, as well as you might have a pool party, that type of thing, or a birthday party at the clubhouse. So they provided 19 spaces that meet our requirements for that, so a total of 544 spaces. We also require 1/3 of the units to have garages, and they're providing 1/3 of the units plus two extra garages. The square footage for multifamily is 650 square feet. You can see the one-bedrooms are 707 minimum, and it goes up to 1,338 square feet. The applicant's engineer has some more exciting drawings to look at than I'm producing here. These are what was submitted for the architectural review. So we got 10 three-story buildings. There's 30 units in each one, so 300 of the 316 units are in these larger buildings. And then, these are the carriage homes, so you can see 12 garages beneath those. So there's four of these buildings, and there's only four units on the second floor, and there's a total of 12 garages. So you could actually, if you're on the second floor here, rent a garage below you, but you wouldn't have direct access into them.
So does that mean you park your car, walk out of the garage, and then find the staircase? Or how does that work?
Yes, that would be my understanding.
Okay.
Because I did ask the applicant themselves, and they said there would not be a direct access into the unit from those garages, so it would obviously have to be from the outside.
And this is not a gated complex, is it?
Yes, it is.
Oh, it is a gated complex?
Yeah, the single-family is gated, as well as the multifamily.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Thanks.
So these are the review criteria that the city attorney just mentioned. Staff's findings are that it has a perimeter ring road that allows most residents to walk or bike within the community, and it keeps the motor vehicles on the outside of the project. This site should have negative impact on neighboring properties. We got a park site to the north. There's actually a 50-foot landscaped area between the single-family project and this multifamily, and then we have White Mill Drive and Whiteview Parkway that separates the duplex properties from this property itself. We have five review criteria, which I'm probably gonna speed up unless you have a question. It does meet three goals, policies or objectives of the comprehensive plan. The project, in staff's opinion, it's the opposite of urban sprawl. That's the planner's nightmare, as this is what we call infill development, and the residents are gonna be in reasonable close proximity, probably five minutes driving time, to a lot of service and retail opportunities. And this was heard at the March 15th Planning and Land Development Regulation Board. They voted 5 to 1 to recommend approval to City Council. The next step is the applicant would turn in a technical site plan that provides the engineering detail, which is mostly the below-ground stuff. The Planning and Land Development Regulation Board found this in compliance with the comprehensive plan and recommended approval to City Council for application number 5216 Whiteview Multi-Family Apartments Master Site Plan for 316 homes, so the developer may apply for a technical site plan that would need to meet all applicable development standards. And the applicant's engineer is here and has a PowerPoint presentation.
Okay, fire one ready.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I hope to live up to the evening. This has been an exciting evening, so I'm glad to be here. I'll try to make this fairly quick. I'm very, I know pretty much everything about this project. I've been working on this for close to four years since it first started, so I'm pretty familiar with everything. So I'll be happy to answer some questions after this. Okay, there we go. So I just want to give you a little bit of glimpse and a little bit of information about Mesa Capital Partners. They couldn't be here tonight, but they are the client, the representatives that are developing this project. Multifamily is what they do across the southeast. They have dozens of projects across the southeast, so they're very familiar with this product, and what they do, and how they do it, and what they like to do, and what is successful for them. So they're not just coming in and trying this for the first time. Since 2010, Mesa Capital Partners has strived to consistently deliver above-market multifamily throughout the southern U.S. They focus on the identification of quality, ground-up multifamily developments, investments in thriving communities like Palm Coast. Their current portfolio is over $500 million, and they have more than actually 3,000 units currently under development. Since its inception, Mesa's portfolio consists of over 30,000 apartment units valued at over $3.7 billion. Ty Mitchell asked that I give you a quote from them, since he couldn't be here, so I'm gonna pull that up and try and read it really quickly. Mesa Capital Partners is excited to have the opportunity to provide high-quality rental housing at the Whiteview project in Palm Coast. We focus on investing in areas that are experiencing rapid population and job growth, which require a variety of housing options to meet demand. We are extremely optimistic about the potential for this site, given its centralized location. As always, our goal is to provide high-end multifamily living options in desirable residential neighborhoods. The expansion of Advent Health in Palm Coast will bring a significant number of medical jobs to this area. Whiteview will offer these employees fantastic living options with high-level amenities. This location also provides bike and pedestrian access to the retail and dining corridor along Palm Coast Parkway, which is very desirable. As providers of high-quality rental living, Mesa Capital Partners is excited to have the opportunity to meet the needs of Palm Coast's robust future growth. The next few slides are images of projects in the southeast that they've done. This is in Panama City Beach, Bessina Villas in San Antonio, Texas, Terabella in Jacksonville, Florida, Ironwood in North Augusta, South Carolina. And here's some of their amenities, the high-end amenities and interior design, as you can see. And there's a blank screen. Here we go, high-end additional stuff. This is kinda like the clubhouse and some of the interior design. As Bill eloquently described, this has been in development for, I think, about four to five years now. Originally, this was one big MPD, PUD, and this was just an element of that that's just coming in later for this final approval of this part of that whole PUD. There's the, pretty much the final layout. There was a couple tweaks, but I think that's it, and that's where we're at. We're getting ready to submit for the technical site plan at this time. Here are some renderings from Mesa's architect. This is what you would, what was called out as the carriage house with the garages, and yes, you can see the external stairway in the middle there. This is the clubhouse, and here are the apartment buildings, the three-story buildings. So with that, I'm gonna wrap it up, because it's kinda late past my bedtime, but I'd be happy to answer as many questions as you like.
So, Bill, is this project, it's about equidistant between the existing hospital and the new campus?
No, I would say it's, I live up there. I would say you could probably get from this place to the new hospital in four minutes or three minutes.
Okay.
And the other one would be 15 minutes.
15 minutes, okay.
Especially the way Bill drives.
Questions from City Council on the project? Vice Mayor, do you have a question about the...
This is the first read, right?
Yeah.
We come back a second time?
No, this is a resolution, so this is one time. This isn't an order. It's just a resolution.
Oh, okay.
But it will, I mean, no, they'll go to a technical site plan.
And then it comes back to us. Got it, right.
I think it's, I think it's staff only after this. So we go through two readings, one at Planning Board and one at Council.
I know it's soon. It's too soon to probably ask, but can you give me some sort of idea what rents will be like?
I was afraid you'd ask that. I know everything about it engineering-wise and what the project is, but I don't have the rent information. They do provide a higher-end apartment living availability, so it's not, it's not, you know, ground level, so to speak.
Framed or cinder block?
Framed.
All right, thank you.
Certainly.
Yeah, just to clarify, this is what we call a master plan, so they do about 80% or 75% of the work, you know, so you can see what it's gonna look like. The architecture's pretty much gonna be the same. Then the next step is gonna be a staff review with a staff approval for development order, and that's really the technical stuff, the underground stuff, you know, the pipes and some of the hard engineering.
And at some point, some sort of research on traffic impact?
Oh, absolutely. It's going on now. Actually, we've been doing a traffic study as part of this process, and then refining the transportation elements as part of the technical site plan as well.
Does this not only affect Whiteview, it will affect Pine Lakes Parkway, too?
Absolutely, yeah. We will look, you know, the traffic study that was done for the original master plan development, we did a traffic study then, and we just received a traffic study for this portion of the project as well. Yes, sir.
And I'm sure the fire response times will be looked at as well.
Yeah, absolutely. Yes, Mayor.
Other questions, council members?
I have a, I just have a couple. The, I'm looking at the kind of high-level rendering, which is on, I don't know what page this is, but I guess my question is, since this isn't coming back before us, are we going to ensure that we've got some type of natural fencing or shrubbery or something like that, that is going to kind of guard these very large buildings from street view?
Certainly. Well, we meet all the standards of the Palm Coast code, which is, as anybody who's ever lived here or been around Palm Coast for a while knows, Bill Butler made sure the code was very substantial and robust.
So, and from our... So, and from our purview, we just have to know that it meets the standards.
I understand that. I just, I guess, I guess this is my encouragement to staff, to just keep in mind the beautification that we care deeply about in the city as we move forth the project. The project itself, I don't have an issue with. I was curious about rents, because I do think that, especially with the hospital being here, we need to be very mindful of our workforce. So, I would also encourage staff to be mindful of that for our residents as well.
Certainly.
I'm thankful to see the evolution of this project, and I think we can all rest assured that Bill Butler had the highest of, you know, conditions and formalities for Palm Coast beauty. Certainly made it that way.
Yep.
Thank you.
If there are no other questions, I would ask if there are any members of the public that have a question or would like to address city council about this project at this time. Seeing no one approach the podium, I'll close public comment. I'll come back to the dais. Any final discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion?
I'll make the motion. Seconded.
Vice Mayor Danko has a motion to approve. Councilman Clufus seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed?
Motion passes 5 to 0.
Thank you. We now move to the consent agenda, and I would ask city council members, any question on any of the items within the consent agenda?
None for me.
I just have one question on the agenda, the agenda for the capital improvement fund engineering solutions.
Yep.
A quick question. I don't know who I should direct that to. Maybe Carl?
Item 14. Thank you. I think it's probably Steve's.
On the first, on page 268 of this, it says the project is proposed at $534,733, not to exceed $750,000. So, I'm just curious with regards to, if we're approving $750, is that just to work in a contingency, or are we hoping to not spend that? I mean, what's the idea with regards to if we're, that's more than the contingency, is what I'm saying. Usually, we do a 10% contingency, I think, so I'm curious as to why we're, you're asking for over $200,000 more.
Although in today's world, that's the old-fashioned contingency. I don't know about today. Let's let Steve answer.
Yeah.
Good evening, council. Steve Flanagan for the record, utility director. This is actually, we're modifying what was in our capital plan. Our capital plan, for the last few years, we've had $1 million in each year for pipelining. We've done real well with the pipelining, and so now what we want to move on to is where our real need is, is in correcting manholes that the pipes go into and come out of. So, we are looking at trying to spend, out of that million for pipelining, we're looking at spending $750,000 of it. The number, the $500,000 number you see are for specific manholes that the vendor has already looked at and give us pricing on. Then, what we'll do after they're done with those is we'll probably have them do several more to go up to somewhere close to the $750,000 number.
Is that necessary?
Oh, definitely. We'll be, we'll probably be wanting to do this for several more years.
Okay, I have no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have questions?
Thank you, Mr. Flanagan.
I would ask the public, nope.
Yeah, public comment on any consent agenda?
So, with that, I would ask for a motion for the consent agenda.
Need public comment on any consent agenda items?
I think I did already. Did I ask a friend? Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on any of the items within the consent agenda this evening? Seeing no one approach the podium, I will close the public comment section and come back to the dais. Any additional discussion?
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor Danko.
Seconded.
Second from Councilman Clufus. It's going to be a pattern. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed?
Motion passes 5 to 0.
Thank you. With that, I would move to public participation, final participation. Are there any public comments on items that were not addressed earlier in the agenda this evening? Don't fight over it. Let's go. First one up.
Go.
Mr., all right, Mr. McDonald.
You can do it together. I'm going to say five minutes between both of them. How about that?
All right. Robert McDonald, Palm Coast. I don't know the name of the street, but it runs between Whiteview and Rimfire. And it's only two blocks long, but the thing that caught my attention was, the other day, they, some contractor was ripping up and replacing new concrete slabs on the sidewalk, on the west side, because there's no sidewalks on the left side. Well, in seven years that I've lived here, that particular two or three-block strip of land probably has at least 30 to 40 new slabs of concrete. Now, I can't understand how and why we got to keep replacing these sidewalk slabs. And I asked this question a while back, and I wanted to know how much a concrete slab of concrete costs, but then, of course, that was a couple of years ago, and the price of concrete and labor and everything else, as we saw, has gone through the roof. But, I can't understand how and why we got to keep replacing 10, 12, 14 slabs of concrete. Now, this particular job that they just got done working on, the end of last week, there was like 11 slabs of concrete, and you can always tell which is the new, because it looks cleaner and brighter. And if you drive down the street and you look on the west side of the street, you can count all the slabs that have been replaced. Now, there's no traffic that's riding on the sidewalks, and I'd like to find out what the life expectancy of a slab of concrete is, because when I lived in New Jersey, my firehouse that was built long before I was born, they just replaced the floors a couple of weeks ago. And that means that those concrete floors that hold fire trucks for 75 or 80 years, they never had to replace them. We live down here. We got to replace concrete slabs like, you know, like you change your shorts. It's crazy. So, I need somebody to explain to me how and why, and why we can't do the work ourselves.
Thank you for your comment, and we'll get back to you on that. Mr. Fuller.
Better introduce myself. Ed Fuller, Palm Coast, Honorable Mayor Alvin, Honorable Vice Mayor Danko, Honorable Teresa Connelly Pontieri, Honorable Kathy Reiter, Honorable Nick Clufus. I was, I wanted to tell you about three incidences that really impressed me. I was waiting for my in-law outside the community center, and I was sitting in the car because it was 95 degrees, and I've already paid for two of my dermatologist's daughters to go through college. That said, I was sitting in the car waiting for, and I noticed a bevy activity out there. They were removing this unbelievable amount of mulch. And it was a windy day. It was very hot, but needless to say, I was watching what the activity was, because I was sitting in that air-conditioning car, waiting for my daughter-in-law. And there's a lot of activity at the community center, and there was a lady who had unbelievable amount of burden. She must be doing a presentation of the community center. And she was, upon entering over there, one of the workers that was doing the mulch turned around and said, looked at her, and she was struggling, stopped what he was doing, put down the rake or shovel or both, and went over there and assisted her to help her inside. All right, 90 degrees, I'm doing well. This guy's out there working eight hours. He's helping that lady in there. Now, my daughter-in-law is historically late. I not only saw that happen once, I saw that twice. That is amazing. Same gentleman, I should have taken it upon myself to get his name, but I just want you to know, God bless that guy. That was amazing. What compassion. And speaking of the community center, that program on autism that they have over there, unbelievable. Congratulations on that program. It is just unbelievable. And whoever is over that, they do an amazing job. And last but not least, there was a gentleman knocking on my door, and my golden doodle went crazy, because he's not trained yet. And he introduced himself. His name is Noah. Noah has a shirt on, and he says, "I'm with the city, and I'm here to change your water meter out." He hands me a brochure and explains everything to me, and I was impressed, because anybody can explain, I'm not a plumber. You can ask my bride about that. He went on Great Lake to say, you know, "We're going to shut your water off and don't use the toilet for a while," and even the dog got it. All by way of saying, he was very professional. He handed me a brochure. He explained to me everything. I did get his name, because he did have a name tag on it, and his name is Noah. So, I just wanted to thank him for the explanation, and thank you for the new water meter. And hopefully, our bill will go down. I don't know. I doubt it. But thank you very much, and please accept my thank you.
So, please turn around and thank staff for those wonderful programs that you were complimenting, because those are the folks that put them together.
Well, I hope this is not out of order. I'll do it anyway.
Thank you for your comments.
Hey, Ed.
Thank you.
Those new water meters, they're a lot more accurate. Your bill will go up.
Anything to help the city.
All right. All right, with that, we come to, we'll close the public participation. Any final comments from city council members this evening?
I have none.
Just very quickly, because I know it's late. Thank you, Ed, for complimenting our staff. I am very appreciative of everything that our staff does, and I don't think they get enough kudos, so thank you for taking the time to do that. Just really quickly, I do want to respond to a few of the public comments, because I know people feel like they come up, they talk, they don't get heard. With regards to the speeding, there are things in our SAP right now that are specifically addressing speeding on residential roads, so please, people that are concerned about the speeding and the traffic, we are working on that collectively as a group. With regards to the chickens, I have requested our policy, and actually have been provided our policy from the city attorney, and I'm looking into that. So, I hear the concerns. I tend to agree with a lot of the public sentiment in that regard, and I'm looking into that. We do have cameras at our parks, so I do want people who are worried about park safety to rest assured that we do have cameras at our parks, and we are taking that very, very seriously. And there was a concern about spending money on infrastructure. We've got some really exciting projects coming up with infrastructure. We heard about some of those tonight. So, staff hears you. We hear you, and we are working on a lot of those things. Thank you.
Thank you, councilperson. Any final comments?
I do. I had this discussion with the assistant city manager while Mrs. Beppen was away on vacation regarding service dogs for individuals that use service dogs and are somewhat being, I don't want to call it discriminated against, but in some of the restaurants and the areas here in Palm Coast, service members, veterans that I know have, know of, have been told that they cannot come into restaurants, or they have to be seated in a particular area. So, I think that it's important at this point that we begin to raise the awareness on the laws and guidelines pertaining to service animals and those individuals that need them. So, I'd like to see if we can have some dialogue or conversation on that and make the business owners in the community aware.
City manager, maybe it's a communications effort that we could put out, you know, a little broadcast?
Yes, Ms. Hyder. Your conversation with the assistant city manager was clearly given to me, and we are looking at how to bridge that awareness.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
I was only going to touch on the security camera issue again. We were, I was part of the council where we expanded the fiber net to all the traffic lights, and we gave the sheriff's office access to those, and then an additional 160 cameras that are all across the city facilities, including our parks for the real-time crime monitoring service. And I was hopeful that I could get that out in front of everybody else, but we've had master plans. We paid for feasibility, we paid for implementation, and now those video cameras are in the hands of our sheriff and their officers, and there is safety in our parks.
Final comment. As long as these meetings may be, staff spends an incredible number of hours in advance of all of these meetings, preparing for them. So, what you feel up here is a multiplier effect on what they've been through in advance of coming here, so thank you all. With that, any final comments from city council?
That's me.
Yes.
City attorney. Yes. I have nothing further.
City manager?
I have, excuse me, I have nothing further. Thank you.
With that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
Seconded. Very good. We are adjourned.